Counsel, Ralph, you stand for the Pledge of Allegiance?
My Pledge of Allegiance to the public of the United States of America.
And to the public for which you stand.
One nation, our God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Julie, roll call, please.
Ms. Mallor?
Present.
Counselor Burson, present. Counselor Matt?
Present.
Counselor Kraft?
Present.
Counselor Gorley?
Present.
Counselor Coleman?
Present.
Counselor Goble?
At the record show, we have six present with one absent. Counselor Goble is absent this evening with a personal matter. At that time, we'll ask for approval for dismiss. Her absence.
I move to excuses. Absence.
Okay. Opposed, second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose. Record show of six ayes, no nays, and one absent. Approval of his absence. Consent agenda.
So moved.
Second.
Motion, second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Record show of six ayes, no nays, and one absent. Recognition of visitors and hearing of petitions. Those that are not here for the zone change but for here for anything else for the public, for the council to hear, any visitors would like to come forth, be heard, please step forward.
It's other than zone change?
Other than zone, that's separate. We're doing something separate. Anybody else would like to come for counsel to be heard? Okay. We will move on to old business because we have a lot of people here this evening regarding the public hearing. I'm moving it up to the front end of our old business. So at this time, at 6:32, I'm going to open the public hearing. And I'm going to read a statement. Hearing disclosure statement. For all those wishing to testify, please be aware that you must raise an issue with enough detail to afford the city council and parties an opportunity to respond to the issue if you later want to raise that issue on appeal. Testimony and evidence must be directed towards the review criteria. If you have any questions, please wait until appropriate time and direct your questions to the council. Please speak one at a time so the recorder knows who is speaking. This time, I'm going to ask the city council, is there any personal bias, conflict of interest, or ex parte information?
No.
No.
I've met with Blair on it, so just to have a discussion on it.
Okay.
No.
No.
Okay.
No.
Moving forward on staff report. Review of the application once more.
Do you want the full staff report again as it was given last time?
Yeah, go ahead. Okay, so there's some folks here that weren't here prior.
This is a public hearing for zoning map amendment application, ZMA 20-02. The applicant is proposing to change the zoning map in an area consisting of approximately 26,552 square feet, .61 acres, located on the Lynn County Sisters' Math, 32 CA, tax lots 4735 and 4700, Sweet Home, Oregon. Sweet Home zoning map has proposed a change from the residential low-density R1 zone to the residential medium-density R3 zone. The proposed zone change would bring the zoning designation into conformity with the property's existing comprehensive plan map designation. The Sweet Home Planning Commission held a public hearing on July 6, 2020. At the hearing, the Planning Commission reviewed application ZMA 20-02. Planning Commission received testimony and delivered it on this matter at their July 6, 2020 meeting and passed a motion to recommend approval of the application to the city council. That motion of approval specified a 12-day appeal period from the date of the decision motion was made. No specific conditions of approval were required. This is... This application is limited to the zone change. It is not... There's not a building permit application for the property. The current zoning, as we said, is R1, medium density is what R3 is, and that's what the comprehensive plan map says. So any further development of the property beyond what medium density, you know, the rules of the medium density zone apply. In that case, it's typically... Medium density is smaller lots than the R1 zone, and it allows more when it comes to attached, single-family attached housing. And then there's a conditional use for other uses such as multifamily housing. Any conditional use that is applied for would be... Would go before the planning commission as a separate application. So the matter tonight is simply whether this location is appropriate for medium-density zoning as the current comprehensive plan states.
This time, any councils have any questions to the staff?
I have a few.
Counsel Coleman?
So, as I understand, the state considers our comprehensive plan as the city's ruling document for land zoning. And you said that the zoning here does not match our comprehensive plan. Why the discrepancy? What brings about a discrepancy?
So, comprehensive plan is the document that governs planning in the city. It's the primary planning document that the city has. The development code and the zoning map follow from that and are based on that comprehensive plan. The city's first comprehensive plan was in 1982, I believe. I looked at it. The map at that time shows that this area, or this application, at that time was zone R1, or the low-density zone. At that time, there were only two residential zones. There was the low-density and the high-density. So there was no medium-density zone at that time. And this area was an area that was designated R1. The comprehensive plan is supposed to be reviewed on a regular basis. The last time we had a major review of it, actually, it was reviewed in 2010. There were some modifications, but it didn't affect the zones or the map at that time. 2005 was the last time the zones and the zoning map were adjusted. That comprehensive plan map at that time made this property designated as the R3, or the medium-density zone. So essentially, what it is, is the zoning map is not updated every time the comprehensive plan map changes, and so it tends to fall out of compliance. When someone desires to use their property or to develop their property, that's when you would trigger that, bring you into compliance with the comprehensive plan. Because otherwise, if you didn't, if you just, every time you change the comprehensive plan map, if you automatically changed all the zoning at that time, then you would have a whole bunch of properties where the zone change would happen all at once, and property owners might not even be aware that their zoning is being changed. It's... And so it's kind of a bit too strong an approach, I guess you could say. And so we tend to have properties that are zoned, that are a little bit behind the times when it comes to that plan.
Are there other areas around that area that are also medium-density?
Yes.
Okay.
So, up here, we have the comprehensive plan map. This is the current comprehensive plan. Brandon, you have the capability of zooming in?
Yes. Over here. I go.
So if you see that, there's a green area where the junior high school is, and then next to that is kind of a tan area to the right of that green area. The yellow spot that's on the other side of that, that's the current spot that we're talking about tonight.
Where is that?
It's easier if I point. Yeah. So this spot right here, that's what the current application is regarding. Yellow indicates the medium density. The light tan indicates the low density. And then the dark tan indicates high density. So what is typical in many cities is to have medium density be kind of a buffer between high density and low density when it comes to residential activity. The idea being, you would rather have townhomes or duplexes next to an apartment complex rather than a single-family home next to an apartment complex. Obviously, there are times when that doesn't hold true when it comes to reality and the way things are built, because things are built at different times, and these plans change over time. So if we, looking at the current situation, you can see all the yellow areas that are medium-density, and they tend to be between the high-density and the low-density.
So if I understand correctly, the small beige area between the two yellow sections and the beige area at the top right is what we're referring to right now? Because it looks like you're saying that the yellow is the medium-density.
So, yeah, this spot right here is medium-density. This, to the north of the property, is high-density, and then this area is low-density. This is a church right now. There's a house here. Single-family houses along Mountain View. This, one thing that's quirky about this map, this road does not actually connect. This is a cul-de-sac and doesn't connect to Mountain View. So the current property that we're talking about, the developer has made it his intention to access off of 23rd and not off of Mountain View.
Are there other structures around this proposed change that are multifamily housing, apartments, or anything?
Yes, that area that I mentioned is high-density. Those are multifamily apartments.
Do we have anything that, at all?
I don't have the pictures. There's people street view of people.
The one that was on the road looks like it's apartments or Jason Park.
Marianne? I'm actually the...
No, no, no. There will be an opportunity. Just bring in a little talk of discussion.
One more question for our new bar. So if that is our comprehensive plan, and that's what the state has for the city as our ruling document, what happens, what are the ramifications if the city does not update our zone to match our ruling document, the comprehensive plan? What are the implications?
Essentially, the comprehensive plan is saying, this is what we envision for the future of the city. If we have an application that wants to fit in with that vision and we deny it, that would be grounds for an appeal to the Land Use Board of Appeals. In that case, the Land Use Board of Appeals is going to look at it and say, my guess, again, I'm not the Land Use Board of Appeals, but that the evidence that would be presented before them would be our documents, what our plans show. And so if they look at our plans and say, well, this says it's supposed to be medium-density, you're not allowing it to go to medium-density, what are your reasons that this document shouldn't apply? So, I mean, we, the comprehensive plan was overhauled in 2005 and then slightly amended in 2010. The question, if we're going to not approve this application, the question should be, what has changed since the comprehensive plan was put in place that would justify not following? Because the comprehensive plan is supposed to control what goes forward. So the way things, if there are changes, the way ideally should be done is, you review the comprehensive plan first and make changes to that, and then development would follow based on that. What we have before us is we have an application for development based on the current comprehensive plan, and so if we deny it, we need to have some kind of reason to basically backtrack from that thought.
And what happens if we don't have that reason?
It would probably be overturned on appeal. It's my guess. Again, I'm not the Land Use Board of Appeals, but we would be rescued.
Any other questions?
I have one. So if it goes a little within our... Is the city going to be responsible for paying for that? Is there a cost involved?
Yes, yeah. So legal, if we go and lose on appeal, the legal costs fall down.
Yeah. Oh, sorry.
Counsel Coleman?
Thank you for... Glad to. So if people do not like the building that's being proposed to be built on this piece of property, where can somebody go to share their thoughts on that? Because we're right now just discussing zoning, not actual building.
Right, so there is no application for a building itself right now. The medium-density zone allows certain uses to be outright and certain uses that are conditional uses. So any use that's outright permitted doesn't go before anything. For this zone, those uses would be things like a single-family home, a duplex, town home perhaps. Those things would be, under certain conditions, would be outright permitted. In that zone, if you have something like a church, a civic club, a multifamily residence, those things would be a conditional use. And the person wanting to build such a use would have to put in an application for that conditional use permit. That would go to the planning commission, and there would be a public hearing on that conditional use permit before the planning commission. And all the neighboring property owners would be notified that there's a conditional use application on that property, and they would have the opportunity to come speak at that public hearing for that conditional use.
So this, Larry, this went through the planning commission?
Yes.
And they sent it to us because we need to approve it?
Right, so for a zone change, it is required to have a public hearing before the planning commission, and then based on their recommendation, there is required to be a public hearing before the city council. So they made their recommendation, and it's before the city council to decide on that.
Good. Zone change went through the planning commission, not the actual building?
Yes. A conditional use application would not go before this.
No person?
So, or is it conceivable that the planning commission could deny a conditional use?
It's conceivable. It depends on what the application actually is for and what condition, because the development code outlines specific areas that need to be looked at for that conditional use. And so they would examine those issues and see if the site plan that the builder, if their use that they're proposing fits within those conditions. Usually, they are conditions related to noise, traffic, impact on neighboring properties, that kind of thing.
Any other questions? At this time, I'm going to open it up to the public for questions only, not testimony or comments, but just questions only to staff for clarification. And then what you need to do is fill your name and address for the record before your question for staff. Okay? First one goes first. Go ahead.
Yeah, I have a couple of questions. I live on 23rd, and it's Frank Matt, KNAPP, 1110 23rd Avenue. And so is the houses... Can you go back to the yellow map? Please?
Yes, give me just a second.
I'll sign it. I'm not going in. Okay, my understanding is, is that these three pieces of land are up for R3?
I believe it's actually only two of them. So you have the two properties that are owned by the applicant form an L shape around the one on the corner there. That corner doesn't actually exist.
Oh, okay, there's just two lots here.
But it's two of those three properties.
Now, so that right now is zoned what?
Well, currently, it's zoned R1.
Okay.
The comprehensive plan map is what you see in front of you, and that indicates that they are planned to be R3, which is medium-density.
All of these would be medium-density there.
Brandon, you want to pull up, can you pull up the current zoning map? So this is the current zoning map, and the light, that tan color is R1.
Okay.
The orange, I can't see the... Brandon, if you could show the light in real quick. I want to make sure I'm telling people the right thing. Yeah, I didn't see. Okay. So the current zoning is, for the property, is the low-density, and then to the north is a zone for high-density.
To the north?
You see, yes.
So 23rd is north of there?
Yes.
So all of that, if you do this, that will all be... What's the largest building they can put on that if this is approved?
The largest that they could put, if this moves to medium-density, the largest, it's not by building size, it's by number of units, so the number of housing units. So if they were able to get the conditional use, which is a whole other question. If they were going to get the conditional use, there would be a possibility of nine units on that .618. Now, if they can't get the conditional use, it is limited to, I mean, outright permitted, you can have two-family dwellings, so duplexes, or a single-family.
Thank you. Which follows, under planning commission? A gentleman in the back room, he did raise his hand. You have a question?
Yeah, if there's any questions, I'm actually the owner of the line 53.3 Avenue, apartment complex.
Name and address, sir. Still, name and address, please. Your name and address.
Oh, I'm Gary Richard, 953 23rd Avenue. We are the owners of the apartment complex just next, adjacent to the property that you guys were talking about. And like, our main concerns are, is I know that there's always been like a major issue, you know, for water drainage, the effects, like, we just replaced our parking lot. It was 9,000 square feet. I mean, I'm a contractor locally. I did all the work myself. We were over $100,000 improvement, just trying to fix it. And I know, like, you know, they've been in the property excavating without putting proper, you know, drainage protection, stuff like that. And our concern is, well, we just put a big parking lot there. We don't want it to get washed out or something, you know, from the water changing from the building structures and stuff like that, the drainage off the rooftops and around whatever structure they put. And I know that it's kind of an ongoing thing of the properties on our side, you know, we already have a lot of water standing on a lot of these properties.
And do you have any questions for staff?
I have a question.
Do you have any other question for staff?
Oh, and then another thing, too, is I just wanted to mention that, you know, I know that that areas have like a lot of riprock over the years. We've cleaned it up. It's like on a family-oriented area on us. I mean, I see people constantly going through and out.
Again, this is not for testimony. This is strictly for questions for staff.
Okay, I'm good.
Okay. Gentlemen back here, name and address for question only.
Okay. Okay, I have a question. Vince Adams, 809 Mountain View. So my understanding is, please reinforce this, the state is what dictates our comprehensive plan for our town. How does that work with that comprehensive plan? Because that's the part I'm hanging up.
The comprehensive plan is developed by the local municipality. The state says we have to have one, but the state doesn't tell us what it has to be. And so there is a process for going through and updating that. When that was first written, it was drafted through a series of public hearings where the public was invited and people discussed what is this plan that we want to have going forward. Anytime the comprehensive plan is revised, there are public hearings involved to gather input from the public. And so it's not a state-endowed system that's in place. It's the state just saying, you have to have one, they don't care what you do. It's kind of like building code, you know, the state tells you, you have to have a safe home, you know, and construct it in a way that's safe, but they don't tell you how many rooms you have to have or, you know, things like that, how many outlets you can have in one particular room, et cetera, just that it has to be safe. So it's kind of like...
So I guess my next question would be, if we have the comprehensive plan, and of course, there's a bunch of us here that don't like what's going on here, we don't want this zone, and we have the hearing here for this, what we're doing now, and we go against the comprehensive plan by getting the city council to decide our way, vote our way, to keep out of the hot water of the enforcement of your comprehensive plan, how can that be changed? So that there's not an organic...
So the problem is, is that it's a matter of, it's kind of the tail wagging the dog, right? Instead of the dog wagging the tail. Ideally, you'd have the people involved in the comprehensive plan and reviewing that and deciding what they want their community to look like. And then people who own properties have some assurance that they're going to be able to use those properties in the way that makes sense to them, that is a good investment for them. And so they're going to buy properties based on that, and they're going to spend money on developing those properties based on that. So really, what we're trying to do is balance competing properties. The person who owns the land has an interest in developing that land and for either their own use or for investment purposes or providing housing for other people. And the people who live in neighboring properties and live in the community, they have an interest in what their community looks like and what they'll look and feel in the neighborhood. They have an interest in adequate transportation facilities and so forth that are all going to be serving those properties. And so we're trying, what we're trying to do is be proactive and make plans for the future. When we go back and try to change those plans based on something that somebody's done or somebody's asking to do that we already said that they could, you know, that we already said this area, we want medium-density, and if we go back on that, then we have to explain to the state, to anybody that that party, that that property owner appeals to, we need to explain why we're not using this plan that we already had in place. Does that make sense?
I understand what you're saying. So basically, what I'm getting out of that is the ship has pretty much sailed on that?
We should have already revised the comprehensive plan. If people didn't like the plan moving forward, it should have been revised already. Whereas now, you already have somebody who owns the property, who's been told, based on these documents, this is what you can or may be able to do if it's a conditional use and so forth. They've already been told that that's what the rules are. And now it's like you're changing rules in the middle of the game. And that's what courts usually don't like, when you try to change the rules for people in the middle.
And the general rule, the general rule is...
Name and address.
...application.
He's the city staff.
Okay. I can hear...
Yes, he's back. So I thought...
When you put down your application, that's the law that's in place. Changing the law later is not going to affect that person. You can change the law later, but that won't affect that person with their application. He gets the law on the day that he puts it in.
So I guess my next question would be, let me see if I can do this right, particularly with the citizens and the folks that live in the area are absolutely going to have no say in the matter at some point. Even though we have representation here and we have some legal issues.
The same is in 2005 and whatever happened in 2010. All I'm saying is, we ran across this in another issue, and I'm just saying, the general rule is, for the reasons that were stated, is that we'll go in and put in your application or whatever, that marks the...
That's the date that everyone's...
That's the date that they get the law that stands at that time, whatever it is. And changing it or going down and changing it later is not going to affect that particular issue.
So then my next question, this is a big, why do we even have a hearing for a zone change if it's already written? I don't understand that part.
So is it, you guys could just move on or we wouldn't even sit here? So the purpose of a public hearing is, is to, is to look at the, the change of a zone and whether that's appropriate. We're required, anytime there's a zone change, we're required to have public hearings on the matter. And the code specifies certain things that apply. And so if, again, I'm not, if, if there is some reason why the comprehensive plan shouldn't rule here, you know, there could conceivably be something since 2005 or since 2010 that has changed that would be a reason to say to the, to any appeals body to say, hey, this, things are different now, right? The problem that you're looking at is that the things that are different is that we need housing even more. And so if we had a shrinking town and we had people leaving in droves, then you might be able to say to Luba, to the Board of Appeals, hey, we don't need medium density there anymore because we have a hard enough time getting people to, to live in, in the single family home, right? So that, that would be a reasonable thing to say to the court, things have changed because we have a much smaller town, we don't need that density anymore. That's not the case now, we, we would need to find some, some reason why that should be even more. As for, you know, just in general, people having a say, when it comes to a zone, it, you know, affects other things like transportation, water and wastewater, things like that. And so if we had something where we said, okay, we don't have the water for the units that are here, you know, that's, that's another reason that you could, that you could like put in front of the, the appeals and say, this is why we deny. You know, so those other things do have to be looked at, even though it's, it's, it's it's in the comprehensive plan and we can't change that retroactively, but we can say, okay, are there things that, that make this so that it isn't really possible? And that's one of the reasons why we have public hearings is for, for things like that. And other things that perhaps staff or the council or the planning commission have involved.
All right, thank you very much for your time, I appreciate it.
I got a question.
Name and address, please.
Jack Hackens, I know at 1080 23rd Avenue. They're always working on our sewer down there, 23rd Avenue. And I'm just concerned about how many works they go through. Nine more families in the, how many more that's going to affect that sewage? They're, they're out there, you know, sometimes two or three times a week of sewage.
So part of an application for development is, we, we do have public works look at the systems and what's in place. And they comment on what, what the system there is capable of supporting. For this particular application, public works do not make us aware of any reason why the system there couldn't handle it. Now, another thing with future development is if, if public works does not, you know, makes it known that, hey, this, the sewer here is undersized to support this, it could be that part of the development is to upgrade lines and things like that. It's, it's not necessarily a flat out, no, it's, well, this has to be upgraded in order for that to serve. And so there's, there's a lot of leeway or things that a developer might be able to do to get that working.
How much is that going to cost the city to do that?
If, if something needs to be upgraded that only serves one property, that would be the applicants and the owner of that property that will pay for it. It's not borne typically by anybody in the neighborhood.
Okay, I'm Frank Knapp, again, 1110 23rd. I'm just kind of curious who this gentleman is here and what his credentials are.
My name is Blair Larson, I'm the Community and Economic Development Director. So my department includes planning and that's, that's under my supervision.
Okay.
Oh, yeah. You might not recognize me after the meeting anyway, just depending on whether I'm wearing a mask or not. Just focus on the ends.
It's kind of funny as I've got city staff stretched all over the room, not in their noble spots. That's why I didn't see our city attorney, we ended up in the corridor there. Gentleman back here, name and address.
Ribbon Rincon, 450 Southeast Jackson Street, Little Mind, Oregon. Couple of questions, do the taxes benefit the city of Sweet Home off the property?
Sure, I mean, that's kind of outside of planning, but all, all properties in the city that are privately owned do pay property taxes and that would go into the general fund.
Could the city of Sweet Home use more affordable housing?
There's a housing crunch in the city right now, definitely, and so any additional housing is appreciated.
Should it move forward past the zoning change? Is your process that, you know, obviously you have to follow all building codes, including any water runoff from the property, from the roofs of the property, etc., correct?
Again, that's a, a building permitting process, not a planning process. But I do supervise also the building activity in the city and, and so any, any development, any building permit application is going to include a site plan and how water runoff is going to be impacted and how, what measures they're taking to address that water impact. Every property owner is responsible for their runoff on their own, it's off of their property. And so you're, you're not allowed to do things to your property that would detriment, be detrimental to your neighbors and increase the stormwater runoff onto their properties, you have to address it on your property. And so we would, we would be looking at that. In this case, with this property, since it is undeveloped, my thought and because of our process, development would typically improve the water runoff situation because there would be things done to the property to address that water runoff and keep it from going on to other properties.
And does the city of Sweet Home have a code enforcement officer that goes around and checks, say, if someone's yard's too high or if there's trash on the property that needs to be removed?
Yes.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Okay, I'm now going to move on to testimony, I'm going to group everything together in favor, in opposition, in neutral. At this time, anybody that would like to make a comment or testimony in regards to either of those three can step forward, name and address again, keep it to three minutes, and go ahead and make your comments at this time. Anybody like to make a comment? Please start on both. Yes, please come forward, name and address.
Frank Knapp, 1110 23rd Avenue. I think 23rd Avenue is a horrible street in this town. We've got at least three disabled kids, one with autism or two, and the traffic there now is horrible. We have the apartments on the northeast, northwest corner of Long, that the people there are doing things that aren't good. And like the gentleman said back there, he's cleaned his apartments up. The traffic, if they're going to use 23rd as a, as a coming into there, that is horrible because right now it's a racetrack in there anyway. And and it just will put a burden on the, on the community, 23rd or 22nd or even Mountview with, you got all the high school, or the junior high kids there, you have a church there, you have all the playing fields. And the safety of our kids in our community should be top notch. And I think it will just create all kinds of problems with traffic. And people who might be there because, yeah, it just, I'm definitely against it.
Thank you for your comment. Anybody else like to come forth, be heard? Name and address.
My name is Marla Blanchard and I'm at 1110 23rd Avenue. And I have many concerns about this due to safety. Because like he said, we have Hawthorne Elementary right off the school and we are all in a zone where we don't have any buses. So all the children from Hawthorne walk down our street at 23rd, I watch them every day, make sure they're safe. We can see them all going back and forth. And then they are also walking back and forth the other way from the junior high. Or, yeah, the junior high, and then we also have the ones who are not bused from the high school. So we have three schools in this particular zone where this is the intersection where all three, the children will be crossing. There's no ifs, ands or buts. And they actually use that property that they want to build on to walk through. Many of the children do, probably shouldn't, but they do. On our street, you already have to pull over if there's a car coming because you only have one lane in the middle and then you have cars parked on one side, cars parked on the other side. So we're already having to pull over to let people by constantly. So that is also a safety issue. And it's also the same way on Iron Street there. Now, the other main street that is next to the football field and the junior high, it is large enough, but ours are not. And then we also have been having massive problems between the apartment buildings that are already there on each side, one on the other side of Long and one on the end, right by where they want to build. Where the people go back and forth in between the apartment buildings. But when they're going in between back and forth, they're stealing everybody's metal out of their yards, their gas out of their tanks, the balls off the back of the vehicles, we've had all of ours stolen, we've had our cans stolen out of our trailer that we keep them in. We've had things stolen out of our vehicles, gas siphon, I mean, you name it. So we've had a lot of crime due to that also, and I'm terrified what would happen if we had more people added to it. I am not opposed to building more, we need homes here in Sweet Home. We, we need apartment buildings, we need low income housing. But this just is one of the most terrible places I could think for safety reasons to put it. Of course, I don't want one just because I don't want to have to look at an apartment building either, but that's not a reason to not build it there. But these safety issues definitely are. And that is all I have to say about that.
Okay.
Thank you.
Anybody else would like to come forth, please do not reiterate the same testimony, if anything new would like to come forth. Come forth, name and address, please.
Yeah, I'm Jack Hackens, I know at 1080 23rd Avenue. I was just sort of expounding a little bit on what she said about the cars and the traffic, okay? Can I see the picture that you showed of the cul-de-sac earlier?
You look good, Jack.
Yeah, and I went by there last night, walked down the street and then I came by just before I came out here. This looks real nice here now, but there's cars all over the place. There's a large truck park here, there's four cars here, more cars parked here, there's two parked up here, two down this side of the street, and two on this side of the street. So when you come around that corner, you know, you have to just drive about five miles an hour, you're going to do that. And I've had people come flying around there at a high speed. And it's, it's not a safe situation. A lot of the people, I looked at the parking lot here, there's a few people that live there that are parking, they park a lot of the apartments, but a lot of them park on the street, you know. Like she said, it's, it's hard coming through there with all this, but it's just a narrow strip, you know. If it was like 22nd, maybe, but I don't know, it's just too, there's too many cars there. There are nine, nine more families live there, that's probably up to 18 more cars, you know. Where are they going to park? They're going to park, I don't know, up the street, maybe. Maybe that's all I got to say, but there are, there are a lot of children on that street too, you know.
No, in the back, come forward, name and address, thank you, sir.
Can I talk to Mary, would you like?
Maybe, talk from there, I'll name that.
Ribbon Rincon, 450 Southeast Jackson Street, Little Mind, Oregon. Obviously, I'm sure the city of Sweet Home has done some kind of traffic safety review of the street previous. As far as safety goes, public improvements, I'm sure that'd be required by the city of Sweet Home. Pepsi Public Improvements have been developed in a long time. It's my understanding that should the zone change go through and there, say, a multifamily dwelling be allowed there, that the multifamily dwelling would also have a certain number of parking stalls as well as lighting, adequate lighting for that whole area, as well as a video surveillance system. So as far as any safety concerns, that would pretty much eliminate that, with the proper lighting and security camera equipment. And I don't know if the city would plan to put no parking against the curves now, but I'm sure that the city of Sweet Home would do that as well. And like has been said before, the city of Sweet Home needs more multifamily housing, needs affordable housing. I don't see how adding nine more apartment units or having nine families, and it may not be. Most apartment complexes are for people that are single and can't afford a house, or a single parent and a child. Not everybody drives vehicles, some people bike, some people walk with it, some people roller with it. So, and another benefit, I think, is that it is conveniently close to schools for people who can't afford a vehicle and their children can walk to school. So that's it.
Remen, can I repeat your last name again, please?
Yes, Rincon, R-I-N-C-O-N.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anybody else would like to come forth with testimony? Okay. Last, angry bottle. Mine, at this time, closed the hearing at 7:16. This time we'll open up discussion with council.
I think 40 years ago, we needed affordable housing in Sweet Home and we allow, we now call manufactured home parks, seven of which we have on our main grid in town. So I'm, I'm not comfortable with that argument that we need more affordable housing in this situation. I think that some of the issues that you addressed can be addressed at the public hearing with the planning commission on the conditional use permit, am I correct, Blair?
Yes, this is not about what type of structure would be on it. If, if, if the zone change is approved, it would open the property up to single family and duplexes. If anything more than that would be wanted, it would require a conditional use and that would be a public hearing before the planning commission.
Where, where are these, where are the issues that you're talking about, which I think, the narrow streets, the safety issues, those kinds of things, the drainage, all need to be addressed by the planning commission, is that correct?
Those, those things could be addressed with conditions on the approval of the, of, of any request. So parking and lighting would certainly be looked at and traffic as well.
So I think it's important that we as a council recognize that whatever we allow has consequences. And we need to be, I mean, the comprehensive plan hasn't been updated and I want you all to know that all of us sitting at this table and in the staff probably had absolutely nothing to do with that comprehensive plan development. We haven't been here that long, so we're dealing with it as you're dealing with it. And does it make me happy? No. But do I recognize the law? I recognize the law. So just wanted you to know that.
Ms. Blair, I, I I wanted to address the parking, Mr. Gentleman took care of that. How many in this room have driven down First Avenue? How many have you driven down First Avenue?
I can't see.
In this room? It slows people down when you've got cars on both sides. And I have to slow down, almost stop every time I go down that street because you got cars coming both ways. They're going to be enough against the speed, absolutely. But we had a big thing on the traffic committee for that and they wanted us to put speed bumps. Well, if we'd done speed bumps, then we'd have been putting on Elm Street, on 23rd Avenue, on 22nd Avenue, on Long Street, and probably on Main Street if they haven't been.
So I don't, I don't think the parking issue should not be an issue in this building. If they don't have enough parking, then that's on them. And I certainly understand, it's on my street, I live on 2nd Avenue, it, there's cars on both sides, I have to do the same thing there because it's so narrow. And that's what, back when they built them, that's what they did. So, anyway, I, I just don't, I don't understand. That's not the right question, that's not the right thing. I, we do need the, we do need the housing in Sweet Home, we have an awful thing on that and it's, it needs to be addressed. Anyway, I just don't, I can't, I can't justify not being on the side of letting them do this, go forward and go to the planning commission, do whatever they have to do and then bring it back to us or whatever. I just don't, I can't see a downside to that for the most part.
Well, the zone change this evening has nothing to do with whether they can build, build or not build. That, it falls back on the planning commission and, and then whether they and then whether they get conditional use or whatever happens there. And they will have a public hearing regarding that again. And you can voice the same concerns at the same time. Again, we're not here to say what you can build and can't build, and we probably, everyone of these councils probably agree with some of, some of the safety concerns and some of the things that are going on. Um, heck, I had a daughter lived on 23rd. I can tell you, she, same, same horror stories. I'm, I understand where, where some of the testimonies come from. But we're here as the councils to decide whether this meets comp and not comp comp, and whether we can buck the luba on this and we can't. So that's something to keep in back of mind, so. Um.
Can I just add too, I aware of the law, I may not like it, but I am aware of how we need to be in compliance with the comprehensive plan. Um, also, people may or may not be aware of HB 2001 that was passed in 2019 that will take effect soon, that will impact cities over 10,000. And so I know that, um, if it gets to luba, I do not believe that they would find it in our favor because of the way that the state has been leaning in that regards, regarding the safety concerns and stuff. Uh, Ray, could we ask Public Works or Police Department to put up one of those speedometer reading signs, just to review, um, this speed on the street?
This is the issue.
This is not the issue.
There's curbs that keep them zoomed by, and we have them, but the speed really isn't the issue, it truly is the congestion. The congestion, it goes around from the junior high, from the high school, from the other, the hoppo. So we have all three schools, and everybody's going, boop, right down our corner. Doing the right thing.
Um, is there a way to even just discuss someplace, um, about movement of children through that area? And I mean, we have sidewalks and stuff, is there something to discuss that safety? Is there a place that that could be discussed separately, because?
No, we can bring that up.
Because as a, this is only an issue, but I'm hoping you guys will all have your thoughts and opinions be heard of the planning commission if the conditional use comes up.
I know, like the gentleman in the back room talked about the runoff, the water runoff. I know my daughter lived on that street, she got a water skate in her backyard. I mean, there is a water runoff issue, but it still doesn't, for our decision tonight, we cannot run the loan change because of the position we're in.
Uh, Carrie Fisher, 953 23rd Avenue. Another thing is too, I do know that we have like, uh, young families and stuff like that. We've got kids, you know, that, just like any kids, the grandkids, everybody people have, they're riding the bikes out, you know, they're four or five years old, they don't know, you know, just run out on the street and stuff like that. I mean, I do the best as like a landowner to make sure those kids are protected and stuff like that, and you know, we've had people come through, break into the cars and stuff like that, chase a lot of people out myself, and try to keep them protected, you know, but I do know there's an issue with safety with kids, you know, and I always keep a close eye for every, all of our families and stuff that are there.
Okay. Well, any other discussion with councillors? Any questions or concerns or discussion? Okay. Um, I appreciate the public coming forth with their testimony this evening, trust me, I do appreciate it. Um, at this time, I'm asking for a directive of council.
So, Mr. Mayor, I knew that we, uh, sent ordinance bill number 11 for 2020, I'm just first reading.
Mr. Mayor, at the last, um, the previous public hearing, which is technically the same public hearing, there was a motion made on the, to, uh, approve the application, and it resulted in a tie.
Mm-hmm.
And so we do, just legally, we do need a motion to reconsider. Or there could be a vote on that.
Correct.
Well, can I make a motion to reconsider?
Just the wording, correct.
So.
Second that.
Yeah, motion second. All in favor, by rule call, please.
Counselor Coleman?
Yes.
Counselor Gorley?
Yes.
Counselor Trout?
Yes.
Counselor Nash?
Oh.
Counselor Gerson?
Yes.
Mayor Mullin?
Yes. The record show we have five ayes, one nay, and one absent. Move it forward in our first reading this evening.
That was the motion to reconsider, that was a stickler. You forgot to actually have a motion on the, regarding the application now.
Okay. Another motion. At this time.
Say to do that. I make a motion to.
Motion, for a motion further. What's motion?
To, to approve the application?
Yes.
And move it to first reading?
Yes.
Second.
Motion and second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Posed?
Right.
The record show we have five ayes, one nay, and one absent. Okay. Now moving on to our rest of our whole business. So those that want to stick around and want to list the rest of the council, you're more than welcome, but.
So that first reading of the zone has been changed. Is that what that means?
Not yet.
It has, so it can be changed, but it does not mean that they're gonna build anything?
So the, the motion was to approve the application, and, uh, what it does is it, it requires moving into, uh, medium ordinance to be approved. And so the first reading of that ordinance would be tonight, uh, later in the meeting, and they would vote on that. It has to be read multiple meetings. So, uh, three total times. And then if all those are successful, then it would, then it would be medium density, which would allow for, uh, single-family or duplexes on the property. If something more dense than that is wanted by the owner of the property, they would have to apply for a conditional use with the planning commission.
I would say there would be a problem if somebody put a house on there or a duplex, but anything larger?
Right, and that's why that conditional use would have a different public hearing and a different time.
Okay, okay.
As if you're a neighboring landowner, you will receive a mail notice of the conditional use permit request.
Gotcha.
Um, I'm not sure how, how far out that goes.
Certain number of feet, I, I don't recall the exact number. And one thing I do recommend doing though is, uh, you can go to the city website and sign up for updates from the city, and all of those, um, all of those notices go out that way too, so that anybody who signs up for it can get word on them.
And when you do that, you want to make sure you check the planning commission, so that you're not receiving all of the notices unless you feel like it. But check for the planning commission.
That's wonderful. Well, I would like to thank all of you for all of the hard work that you do for this city, and we love Sweet Home, and just really, really appreciate you all.
Your hard work.
Well, guys, have a great evening.
Can we leave?
Don't take up any more of your time.
No, I, I'm hurt, I'm sorry.
Thanks for coming this evening.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Very great.
So Jeff?
If you have any questions, too, bring it in.
Yeah.
I have a question.
Yeah.
So they, this, this community has been talking about, I, it's been pretty high currently from their perspective. Is there a way we could do a concentrated?
In that neighborhood?
Yeah.
Are they referred to? Yes, I'll, I'll look, I'll pull some, uh, stats associated with that neighborhood, and we'll do a little speed monitoring in there as well to see what kind of the, the issues are, and then I'll report back to you the next council meeting or the following.
Thank you.
Okay.
One other request. Could maybe, um, Sean look into, I mean, we're in watch form in that area?
Absolutely.
Maybe some people back there.
You can reach out to some of those and, uh, see what they're level in, just one year.
You know, in that neighborhood, can you put Jason on a bike and let him go under there?
We'll see. We'll check it out. Okay.
All right.
Moving on, uh, our honorable judge, Laurie Blake's here for a court update tonight.
Well, good evening, I can clear out a room like nobody else. Uh, again, my name's Laurie Blake, uh, I'm here with my wife, uh, we're down for the evening. Um, I want to thank you, opportunity for, uh, by the city council to talk to you today. Uh, I've been your judge for over ten years, uh, I invite you to come to court sometime and watch from a spectator, spectator standpoint. I've actually seen some people on the council in my other cities where I work where they show up, not as a spectator, so trust me, it's better as a spectator, because I used to be, uh, on the other side of the bench a lot myself when I was younger, because I was a bad driver, so trust me, I understand. Um, we have arraignments at nine o'clock in the morning, and then we do late payments, people who have trouble paying their, uh, whatever they owe the court, and then we do traffic in the afternoon. Uh, this court in Sweet Home is a, uh, criminal and non-criminal court, so we handle basically three types of cases in the court. We handle misdemeanors such as things as DUI, reckless driving, assault, theft, trespass, disorderly conduct. We also handle violations, and most of those are traffic things like speeding, careless driving, no insurance, no operator's license driving while suspended. And we also do city code violations, so people with problems with dismantled vehicles or debris, et cetera. So those are the kinds of three cases we handle on our court. We don't do felonies, all felonies go to circuit court. Uh, we do occasionally have jury trials, but those are six-person jury trials, uh, felonies are 12-person jury trials. Uh, and so those are generally the types of cases we handle. Um, I like dealing with certain criteria people if I can, I like dealing with first-time offenders, because we all make mistakes, the question is what you do after the mistake you make it. So I offer diversion for first-time offenders, which means pay a fee to the court, keep your record clean, and if you can, uh, do that, we'll dismiss the citation, because if it goes on your record, it does increase insurance rates, and I know for some people that's really tough. Uh, the other people I try to work with are younger people, uh, particularly if they've had some problems, and, and sometimes if you're getting a ticket in a big city, it's kind of like a number, you just kind of get through, put through the machine, and you really don't get the personalized care that you can get in a small city, so I try to work with them as much as possible. Uh, I'm a high school dropout, so I got my GED years ago, and so if somebody comes before me and they, and they are dropout, I try to get them into the GED program as much as possible, because it gives them a great sense of accomplishment, so I'm really into the, the legal plus the non-legal parts of running a court. And then the last people I try to work with are elderly drivers, because now I'm becoming an elderly driver myself. Um, and when I was, I grew up in Calistow, Montana, a small town in northwest Montana, and when my grandfather got to the point where he shouldn't be driving anymore, my father sat him down and said, you had that tough talk. It doesn't seem like a lot of people are having that talk anymore, and so we get some of these elderly drivers out there in their eighties, nineties who shouldn't be driving, so usually if they come to my court, I try to give them a respectful way out, which means that if they give up their license, uh, and again, I don't want them to give up their identification because they need it for other purposes, but if they promise not to drive anymore, I usually dismiss citations and just let it go at that, because it takes care of the problem of not having them on the road. Um, uh, so my, my court wouldn't work without support staff, so I have three people that are working there. They basically run the court, and I just show up and smile and, and do things every once in a while. And I also have the, uh, great opportunity to work with, uh, great staff here, uh, I've had some really great interactions with your, with your staff, so I'm going to give you an atta boy, atta girl for hiring great people here who also hire great court staff, because it makes my job really easy. So, uh, I'm going to go into a second part of the discussion, I tend to talk fast, uh, fog up my glasses too, which is a pain, but, uh, if you have any questions about what I've talked about so far, I'd be more than happy to answer any questions you have.
Any questions, council?
What's the name of that lake there in Calistow?
Flathead Lake.
That was a test.
Well, we're headed back there next weekend, so.
It's a, it's a, it's a great city.
Yeah, yeah. Woods and Saloon, we all know, yeah, they're a great place.
Yeah.
Uh, so, uh, one of the things that, uh, where's the chief?
The chief.
Chief is also a great person to work with, I have a great, uh, relationship with him, I think is important. Chief Lynn brought up a situation or an idea several months ago, actually about a year now, about a community court. Uh, and a community court is, is kind of, sometimes they're legal and sometimes they're non-legal, I'm going toward the non-legal, uh, aspect of it. And he happened to say that, and just, I had just gone to a conference where they had people from Eugene Community Court come in to do a presentation at a judge's conference. And so, uh, Chief Lynn and I and the court staff went to Eugene and looked at their community court. Uh, and we got some ideas off of that, and we've been working, uh, we started late last year, we went till about February, then everything kind of got put on hold for a couple of months. Now we've had two more meetings, and we're hoping to start the community court in September. And when I'm talking about this community court, we're looking at dealing with, uh, three different types of individuals. Uh, people with mental health issues, people with alcohol and drug issues, and homeless issues, or any combination of those three. Uh, I could handle those in a criminal court, but I don't like handling those in a criminal court, particularly people with mental health issues, uh, that could be a really scary situation. So what we're going to do, and what we've been developing over the last several months, is a situation where somebody charged with a crime, and, and one of the things we like to do is with help of Chief Lynn, his officers know these individuals better than any of us ever will. So if they meet a person who has one of those three criteria that may benefit from community court, rather than putting them into criminal court, they would, they would assign them to community court. And when they come into community court, we would identify them, the court would then make the decision about whether they're good people to have in the court. Secondly, we would have peer support people there who would walk them through the system. Because I think that's really important when you have somebody coming into this type of situation, you need anybody there, particularly on the level of the people you're dealing with to help them through the process. Then once they're in the courtroom, they would fill out a questionnaire, it's a simple three-page questionnaire with the help of their peer support person, that would bring up issues, and what we're looking for is issues of, again, alcohol and drug issues, mental health issues, uh, whether they have organ health plan, their living situation. Uh, another one that we came up with is ID, it's very important that people get ID, and without ID, that makes their life very difficult, so we've come up with an idea of how to get people IDs. We talk about transportation, education, employment, whether they're veterans, whether they have children, and whether they have a social security, SSI or SSD. So we kind of go through all that list of potential things out there, and then we, then we, then they will come meet with me, and again, this is a non-criminal situation, we don't have prosecutors, sorry, Robert, uh, we don't have prosecutors there, we don't have defense attorneys, so we save money that way. And we sit them down, we say, all right, it looks like you have the following needs, and we check off the list, in fact, we have a, a list here that they would, that we would go through them, and it says here, I agree to work and cooperate with the following service providers, providing housing, uh, providing, uh, substance-free lifestyle, employment, uh, high school education, mental health assistance. So we have them sign up and then agree to do all the things that we wanted to do. And then the other thing that's important with dealing with people like this in community court is if I was to say, all right, you're going to come back in a month and I want you to go into Lebanon, I want you to go to Albany, and I want you to go see all these people, it just doesn't get done. So what we've done, and the last time we had a meeting, we actually met in city council, we had about twenty people here from all over the place. Uh, Community Health Centers of Denton County, Samaritan Health, World Outreach, Chance Recovery, Community Services Consortium, Lynne County Mental Health, Lynne County Alcohol and Drug, Exodus Recovery, Country Counseling. So we had about twenty people in this room, and what they would do is after they meet with the judge, they would, we would have those people stand up in the back of the courtroom, they would go see those people, one at a time, for each, each person, or each idea, or each situation we think we've identified that they need help with. And then at the end of that, they would come back the next month, and we would see how they did in reference to going through and following through the process. So what I like about it is it's non-criminal, it's right there, they don't have to go anywhere and get anything, and then we follow up once a month, and we expect this to last about six months. If at the end of six months, they have done what they're supposed to do, and again, for some people, doing small steps are big steps, so we have to recognize it, not everybody's going to get treated on the same ma, metrics. If they graduate and, and do what they're supposed to do, we dismiss the criminal charge against them, and then they can go on with their lives. So that's kind of the general idea behind community court, and, and I think with the people we're trying to, uh, trying to work with, I think it would be successful, so. I, I don't want to take all of your time, because I know you've been at this for a while already. Does anybody have any questions?
Anything, any questions?
I love the idea. I've loved it from the beginning.
Okay.
Really pleased.
Good.
So I'm trying to, from your perspective, is this being highly effective?
In Eugene's really being effective, uh, but they've set it up a little bit differently, but they have a, quite a homeless population in Eugene. And what happened, uh, when I think about, you know, that we've had these recent protests and people having trouble with the local police department in different jurisdictions, luckily you don't have that here. But I think one of the things that you and I have talked about is that if we can, you know, it seems like you spend ninety-five percent of your time on five percent of the population. And, and I think with the people that we're talking about, that takes up a lot of police time, would you agree with Chief?
I would agree with you.
And then if we can funnel that time away from the police, so they're not dealing with these folks on a regular basis, then I think that makes the police department much more effective in dealing with police issues, not these types of issues, which I consider more social than criminal. So I think it can be successful, and again, what I want to do is we're going to tailor it to the community. I want to make sure that we recognize local resources and, and offer it to people, and may evolve over time, we may have to say, well, this doesn't work, we'll have to try something else, so I think we have to be flexible to see what, what comes our way. Any other questions?
Well, Mr. Blake, thank you for coming this evening.
You're welcome.
Appreciate it, and thank you for all you do, and thanks for doing all the great work you do, and we appreciate it.
Thank you very much, thank you.
Have a good evening, thank you. Information-only informances, resource updating.
Well, this really kind of did.
Well, this really kind of is, uh, almost like it was planned that we'll have to follow behind the judge and, uh, some similar topics and ideas that are, are coming out.
What's happening?
Well.
This is an odd seat to be sitting.
This is. I've got to break him in some point. This is the perfect time. So, um, a- as you know, like I said, uh, following, uh, the judge is a perfect opportunity to discuss some of, uh, what we've learned and some what we've accomplished and some of what we're working on regarding, uh, homelessness and our outreach programs. Um, as you all know, Sean Morgan, uh, we hired Sean a few months ago and one of his many functions with our department is, uh, he serves as the homeless liaison, our homeless liaison. And so he's really been tasked with going out into the, the community, into our region and finding out the services that are here, the providers, the organizations, and how we can help facilitate, um, uh, their response here and how we can help get people off of the street and, uh, housed in a stable situation. So, um, that's one of his, his goals and our goals. And, and we really started diving into this, as you know, probably, uh, two, two and a half years ago is when we first started. Really, uh, we as the police department kind of dipped our toes in the water to see, uh, what could we do to make, uh, make a change? Because what we're, had been doing wasn't working. And, and I think there was a lot of public concern over, um, homelessness in our area and rightfully so. And so what, uh, what we were hoping to do today is really kind of, um, come forward, talk about some of the resources and some of the organizations that are present here in our community and that are doing some, really some good work. And, um, and then really kind of some of our thoughts on where we need to go from here. Um, I wish I could say, you know, by, by January, we'll have this knocked out of park. But that's, I'm pretty confident that's not going to happen on, on any level. But, um, I believe in, as, as you'll hear, that we're making some good strides and there's a lot of good things happening in, uh, East Lynn County, specifically Sweet Home. Um, I, I think, uh, we get talked about quite a bit i- in a good manner now with some of these other organizations and agencies and just, uh, trying to, trying to do something, putting our best foot forward. So with that, I'll turn it over to, uh, Sean and he'll kind of walk you through what he's learned and some of the, the judge already mentioned him, but a number of the organizations that are already here in our community.
In fact, those organizations were really encouraged to find out that all those organizations have been really active, um, you know, especially in the last couple of years. Um, you know, the initial effort came up with the adult services team and that started and kind of went away with COVID. It's come back. Um, it looks like it's happening again. Uh, I saw a man filling out the paperwork for it, uh, just this last week. Um, and we're really, really, really encouraged to find these people are already here working with them constantly, uh, whether it's, um, you know, whether it's the family, uh, family resource, uh, group or the, um, Orland County itself or CFC, um, workers are out here. They're, they're signing people up for services and getting it done. Uh, they've had a few successes just in the last couple of months. Um, there's one, you know, one man went into treatment, uh, just a couple of months ago and I just got a text today that another one's in today. Um, we've, we've seen that, we see a woman stranded here in Portland. Um, she was able, she was rescued by one of these, uh, groups and sent back to Portland where she was able to get back with her kids. Um, uh, another, uh, veteran is in the process now and just in the last month and a half for housing. Um, you know, this stuff's moving forward. They're working hard. Um, one of the things we find, um, as we're looking at them is sometimes some of the homeless folks, they have a little bit of a, they have a lot of challenges from. It's hard for them to, it's hard for them to get places. It's hard for them to call. Sometimes they have phones, sometimes they don't have a charger. Um, just a million things and a lot of them, again, Judge Blake mentioned them all. Um, you know, finding, you know, finding SSI, finding SSD. Um, they, they have, they have, they have to remember to get out there and make a phone call, remember to fill out paperwork, but they need help filling out paperwork or they don't know how to use a phone and need a little hand figuring that out. And sometimes that's overwhelming for them. These folks are coming, a lot of these folks who are helping, they're coming from out of town and they're not around here all the time. And so one of the things we kind of think they need is maybe a little, a little hand, a little help, a little support going forward, uh, make sure that they stay connected with these service providers, remember to make those phone calls when they need to. Um, you know, whenever, you know, whenever there, and there's an opportunity to do it. Um, so we're working on a kind of a volunteer concept, a support, a peer support concept or a volunteer resource concept. And going to be looking for volunteers to work one-on-one with, with the homeless, with the agencies supporting both of them. Uh, and we're keeping connected and get them to the point where they can actually, um, you know, get off the street and into that stable housing. So that's kind of where we're at right now. We're just putting the final touches on that and trying to figure out where it's going to be and who's going to, who's going to kind of run it. But, you know, we'll be talking about that here in the next couple of days, a little further with some of the groups that are involved.
So there's just, uh, there's a lot of resources in our area and what we're trying to do is find ways to, to kind of, uh, facilitate a lot of the work that they're already doing. Um, all of these organizations and agencies, um, that, that have been mentioned are coming from outside of our area. They're coming from Lebanon and Albany to do work in our community for our people. And we're really just trying to find ways to help facilitate what they do and make it a little easier for, for both their, the clients that they're trying to serve and both, uh, as well as these organizations. Uh, I mean, Sean hit the, um, nail on the head. There's some gaps. We, we know there's gaps here and how can we fill those gaps? And some of those gaps stem from, um, well, those organizations, a lot of them are only here in town once, once a week, maybe once every other week. And so how can we help fill those gaps in between that time? And the volunteer, uh, group, volunteer base is one of those ideas we're pushing forward and, and it's getting a lot of, um, good response from some of the organizations that they, that, that may really help, help that need. But the second thing I think we all have to realize is that, um, even if we can get some of these unhoused individuals eligible for housing and signed up for housing, there's no housing around. There is an extremely limited supply of affordable, um, housing for, for anyone. And so, um, some of the, the waits, it could be 12 months to 24 months, but even at that point, there's no guarantee that, uh, some of these individuals could actually find a place to go into. So that is a real, real big concern and, and there's a lot of, uh, members, uh, businesses within our community talking about that and trying to figure out how, how can, uh, how, how can that, how can we help that situation out? And so a lot of good conversation is happening. Um, but honestly, nobody has the actual answer to that, you know? Um, and a lot of debate that just took place here earlier in the day. Um, but there is just a lack of affordable housing in our, in our area. And I don't think it's a, a shock to anyone to hear that. But those are the two things that we're really looking at is, um, I think the volunteer base could, could help out a lot. Um, but then the, the trying to identify and find some affordable housing options would be the next stage, even if it's like some transitional housing somewhere that we could, uh, help some individuals, uh, down that road to, to stability. Any questions? I know we've covered a lot.
Sean, the last time we talked, you talked about the fact that if a homeless person had to go to Albany, they wouldn't go because they don't have any place to put their stuff.
That's a, one of the many challenges they face.
Are you still looking for that kind of?
Still, uh, we're looking for a way to, you know, they can lock up their stuff. There's, um, you know, I, I talked to the Rotary Club about this and, um, and I know the pastor at the, um, at the Church of the Nazarene, which has obviously been very instrumental in a number of ways, um, are looking to a way to have a locker system where we can, where they can push their things and be able to go out of town and know that their stuff is going to be safe.
So we haven't solved that problem?
We haven't solved that problem yet. But it's definitely on the list.
I can see why that would definitely be getting dealt with.
Any questions? Thank you.
Mayor, if I could, if I could, I just got to dig Sean through this. He has jumped into this with both feet. As you know, Sean's recently a new hire for us. Uh, we stole him away from another local entity. So he's certainly no stranger to this room. Uh, but Sean has jumped in with both feet and a lot of fervor and worked really, really hard to, to this point. So I got to get Sean through this.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay.
Yes, I'm all attached.
Mr. Mayor, I had a pretty good talk with Sean about these three things. I hate to say it, but I was pretty impressed. Don't get that on me. Um, request for council action, resolution number 22 for 2020, resolution submit lectures, question renewing link services operation plan.
Mr. Mayor, if I could, we have some people here as a, as a guest speaker, um, both staff and non-staff.
Yeah.
Given that we've swapped things around in the timeframe and I'm afraid that at least one of our next two items might have a little more discussion to it than we initially thought. Would it be possible if we could invite, uh, uh, Sweet Home Disposal up and move some new business item A as well as item B next? I apologize.
Yeah, it's fine.
Thank you. Appreciate that.
Table for the request and move up the, um, the two topics of the special guests this evening, which I've come forth.
Thank you.
That's what we don't like hanging out with.
We start early in the morning, as you know. Just fill in the question form. Okay. Thank you. Um, so a couple of things that we wanted to talk to you about is, um, how we continue to do garbage service during this unprecedented time. Um, and also some things we're doing at the transfer station this year and hopefully next year. So our objective during this COVID-19 crisis was to keep our employees and members of the community safe and healthy, to continue to provide a quality level of service, and to keep our transfer station open. The transfer station, as you know, has been really busy. Um, with the increased traffic due to people being home cleaning, out and doing yard work and required social distancing. We made some changes to keep people in their cars while they're at their scale. Um, we have another person out there, another, an additional person out there helping with traffic flow and better control of garbage in the tipping area. Instead of handing, um, numbers to customers on their way in, we're putting on their windshield, on their windshield wipers. When it's not, when it's raining, we've been using license plates. Uh, we have gloves, hand sanitizer. We added a watching station for the public near the scale. We're not having anyone sign their credit card receipts. And we've been adhering to state social distancing mask guidelines. So it's been a, it's been a balance between customer service and safety. Um, our first three core operating values are safety, integrity, and customer service. But first, safety focusing on safety-first mentality, making sure employees and customers are protected in a congested environment. Integrity, doing right by our employees and our community is key driver to our success and it's something we talk about daily. We expanded our hours on the weekend to help with the wait times at the transfer station. So for July and August, we opened at 8:30 in the morning on Saturdays and we were also open on the Fourth of July. Customer service, setting customers up on payment plans if they've been financially burdened by the COVID. Um, for our employees, we provided a $2 an hour COVID bonus for frontline employees to help offset the financial hardships that they felt. And we did not lay anyone off during this. It's given us a renewed sense of pride in what we do, uh, that we are essential. And we've received notes of appreciation from many customers and meals have been delivered to our drivers, which is really nice. The transfer station, um, go ahead. So at the end of last year, the beginning of this year, uh, we finished, uh, what we call our Z-Wall project. We relocated our metal recycling over near the public recycling area, um, to help with congestion and we added an excavator. And we have plans for next year to redesign the transfer station, possibly add a second scale to speed up the process and, um, create a larger space for customers to dump their garbage and debris nets around the property to help with debris control. So the Z-Wall project, um, we spent about $180,000 to increase our footprint on the dumping floor. And it also created a second pit area so we can load two semi-trailers at a time instead of just one. This is a aerial view. Um, that blue square on there is what we filled in with concrete. So that, that's the added space we have. Here's, uh, didn't go through the pictures. These are some pictures of the project as it was happening. And that's the added area up above that we didn't have before. That's what it looks like completed down below. And there's a picture of a recycled trailer in the new pit, which we've been using quite often. Couple of things you may not be aware of. Our trucks are equipped with event recording cameras. And these cameras are used for coaching tools for drivers. So if there's any kind of event collision, um, anything that triggers the camera, it will record eight seconds before and four seconds after an incident. So we have that. And also we have an app that will remind you of your pickup day. And it also has an interactive waste wizard. Um, you can put in any item and it will tell you the correct way to dispose of it. This is a picture of the camera that's in the trucks. It records in the cab and out of the cab, out the front windshield. And our app is called Waste Connect. You can download it from Google Play or the App Store. It's free. It'll remind you the night before to put your can out and if it's recycled, we bring your garbage really. You have any questions?
Any questions? I have, um, a question and one concern. Um, first of all, what's, what's your busiest day? Is it Saturday?
Yeah, Saturday is busiest. Tuesday is also busy.
Uh, well, my concern is when the cars are backed up all the way to Main Street and double that and those kinds of things. I, I don't know if you have a, a way to help do that with the second scale and all those things. But it's pretty packed, backed up as well. Uh, no matter if you're the first one in or the 10th one in, there's a lot of cars that are backed up and it's really actually kind of dangerous on that corner. It's pretty busy. But I don't know if you have anything you want to do or talk about.
It has helped on Saturdays opening early because people will start lining up at nine o'clock in the morning. So by opening at 8:30, we're not starting with a line that we can ever catch up with. Although there have been in the last few months, you know, 150 cars a day coming through there on a Saturday, which is a lot. And most of them not from Sweet Home.
But it's also not on Monday, right?
We're closed on Monday.
And so just to, just to expand on that real quick, uh, I'm Brian White, 3373 Rosemont Way in Eugene. I'm, I'm one of Candy's coworkers. Um, uh, we are, we are looking into our 2021 capital to do a complete redesign of that space because if you look at that space, there's a large building right smack dab in the middle.
Yeah.
There's also an in-ground scale, which is a major issue because that is, um, it'd be very expensive to basically dig out and move and put somewhere else. But at this point with, with, um, the continued increases in volume we have there, uh, we are just playing out of space. I mean, if you go in there, you see people.
Yeah.
There's arrows all over the place. It's, it's, uh, certainly not ideal. Uh, and so we, we have, uh, some, some external engineers, uh, attempting to help us out, try to figure out what the best move is. So that is our, that is a large project. A, uh, I think we have $300, $300,000 plus or minus earmarked for that next year to make some adjustments there.
So I just wanted to say thank you. I know that, as you said, when people are home cleaning, that many people use the services of us to offer your influence.
So I'll, could you maybe have the truck members to bang around, you know, at my, my house at five o'clock in the morning?
Quiet down a little bit.
I can get just air claps.
Well, another thing too is we are getting a new truck next year, uh, brand new, uh, brand new automated truck. So, um, unfortunately it was planned for this year, but with everything that happened, uh, we had to wait a little bit. Um, and they are substantially quieter than the current trucks that we have. A couple of the current trucks we have out there, but understood that as a common concern for.
I don't, I don't.
Their folks.
This block truck, I don't know if it's too high or something. It's not up either.
Gotcha.
Any other questions?
I think a good idea with your rate increase coming up, that you do some publicity with newspaper about the good things that you're doing. Because oftentimes, you know, you're not thought of as doing good. Because oftentimes, you know, you're not thought of as doing good things except for picking up our trash. But I think all the changes that you made so far might be a good feature article.
You know, probably pictures and stuff.
If you do that.
Plus it never
There's no media in here.
Yeah. I do appreciate your services too.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
You have a question?
Thank you for moving us up. Appreciate it.
Thank you, Dan. Thank you. Okay, we'll move back to hold this request. Also, actually, that's rule number 22 for point one.
Mr. Ray, I apologize. I got a guy here on overtime. That's what I'm trying to get through, which was the street sweeper.
Oh.
Sorry.
Okay. We'll move on to the street sweeper.
Yeah. So you can, we're on page 44 of your packet. And there you have a memorandum from Public Works Director and the Finance Director relating to the history of our street sweeper. We bought it used. I think when you go through the numbers here, you'll see we've gotten every last penny of value out of this piece of machinery. And I think that, matter of fact, I know that there are community members who are not happy with the ability of the piece of equipment here at the end of its lifespan, and that it doesn't necessarily pick everything up the way that it should. Tommy and Dominic have some more information for you. We brought pictures. We've even got the machine. Tommy has taken some panels and stuff off so that we could actually go out and review it, if you'd like to do that. But I want to present to you two, Tommy did quite a bit of work on this and put some numbers together. And we wanted to discuss the condition of our street sweeper with you. So with that, I'm going to turn it over to Tommy and Dominic and Brandon and let them go with it.
So we were having people calling in saying it wasn't picking up very good. I went to get parts down to Napa. I was headed back and it was going down man. It was just blowing dust out of the top. So I called the guy operating it back in and started looking, thinking maybe the water system was something was wrong or something was loose or it was sealed maybe. And started looking a little deeper. And you can see the wear liner in the picture on the right. That's supposed to all be rubber, and it's all been worn all the way through. So it's worn all the way through the metal at this point. And a lot of that spot is like really thin. And then, I don't know, let me go to the next picture. So there's holes on, like all throughout the entire hopper in that area. That whole seam right there has been worn basically all the way through, all the way around. And then the inside where bolts go through, the nut that holds the fan to that housing. There's at least three of those that are like obviously halfway on. So that's part of the hopper that controls like where the airflow goes to pick everything up. Can you zoom in on that, Brandon? On the right one? So kind of up in the middle of the top picture up there, there's a hole worn through on that side. That panel was pretty thin. Quite a bit, but pretty, like three quarters of that panel was worn thin. So, so thin to the whole top. This is just more pictures of that same section and how much it's worn through. That picture. So I think that's just another picture. Oh, so this is on the inside. There's a brace that runs up the outside of the box. This is around the inside of that where the metal's been worn through all the way. So right to the right of my finger in the picture on the left, that hole, you can kind of see the line where it starts outside of that brace, and it's a good one to the inside of that. That's where that hole starts. And on the right, that's one of the nuts that holds the fan that's moving through. Now, that piece is can't remember the exact name, but that's what holds one of the pulleys on. So after I loosen that, push it out, got the pulley off, went to pull it off and it came apart in two. You can kind of see like the, where it was rusty before, so it was already breaking. And I think just going to be backing it off, it's a taper lock, it's what they saw that. So as you drag the bolt in, it pulls it off. You can see kind of the rust in, like on the edges there. So that's where it was already starting to break. And that's just more pictures of that same, same spot on there that's starting to wear through. That's a picture of the inside of the hopper. There's a big gap on the picture to the left. That should be basically sealed. And that's a piece that like folds down so that helps direct the air. And then those are just more pictures in the same area with more holes. That was one thing. So that's the piece that's creating the gap. And it's fallen apart pretty good.
I'm just going to roll through some of these, just because I think a lot of them are similar.
I think I've seen enough.
And there's a lot of just different components that go to it that are all kind of in just similar conditions, the hopper and this piece.
Mr. Mayor, is your chance maybe of another person looking at it to make sure there's some cracks?
So the backstory on this sweeper, as you likely know, is we've had this sweeper for nearly 11 years or just over 11 years. We purchased it used from another municipality that is relatively close by to us. And like Ray said, it has, it has been well-used by this organization and has done a tremendous job to this point. However, now it is to that point where we as an organization have to determine what is the next, what is the best, what's the next step for us? We've kind of put together three different options. Certainly, one of those options would be to repair the current piece of equipment. In that regard, there are two different options. One is that Tommy here could certainly, you know, do a lot of the parts and labor stuff. It would take a significant amount of his time and would take him off of other projects. However, of course, then there is a slightly reduced cost to doing all those repairs. What's the estimated lifespan on, on those repairs if you were to make them, do you think?
I think in some areas, it's probably greater than others. Some of it where the rust is so bad and the parts are worn something that they just need to be replaced. I would, it could be, it could be a month. It could be two months.
The other option with the repairs is to have, is to basically buy a new, correct me if I'm wrong, a new box, a new hopper to, to, to replace what is currently there. It would take care of a lot of the holes that you saw in some of those pictures. That purchase would be in the ballpark of $30,000 on a piece of equipment that if we were lucky and if it was functioning as it should, we would probably get to resale for $4,000 and change. So there's certainly a cost benefit analysis that could have done there as to whether the 30 grand is, is worth that.
Mr. Mayor, so one question. I think I talked to Brandon about this. Can we go through Enterprise to buy another piece of equipment?
Yes, is the answer.
Used or new?
Uh.
Or both?
Either. At this point, they have, they have given us an estimate for a new one. There are, it is a little outside of Enterprise's normal wheelhouse because it is a very, very specialized piece of equipment. And they don't typically do that kind of a thing. However, they have given us, they were able to get corporate to sign off on, on assisting us with this. Likely because we're new and they want us to stay with them. But they, they were able to pull together a quote. We have two options if we were to pursue a new street sweeper. That would be to buy it outright. We don't currently have the budgeted funds available to do that unless we were to sacrifice other items that we were planning for this year. Or we could certainly pursue a lease agreement for a new sweeper. These sweepers are, I think the, the price estimate was 162,000. It's in the memo line. Don't have it. Oh, 160,000.
Well, I do have a question.
So, you know, we could certainly pursue a lease agreement. We've done, the city has done lease agreements before for vehicles. Particularly in the police department, we used to, we used to lease a lot of their vehicles and they were on three-year lease cycles. That would at least get us through this year. We think we could find the operating room to be able to afford that lease agreement for the current year. And then maybe plan on the following year, that second year, through in the budget process, plan on paying that, that off in that second year so we didn't have continuing interest accrual. So there's, there are a variety of options that, that we can all discuss. Certainly, we're not looking for a specific decision today, but we are kind of, I guess, gauging council interest in which route to want to go because this is such a major piece of equipment. One, in cost, and two, in how the city uses it. Certainly, the city does use it for just standard street sweeping, but it also serves other purposes where in the event of an accident on any of our roads or the highway, the street sweeper can come in and kind of help clean some of that up. If we have any street projects, we definitely need, we have to clean up the streets that we're working on before we can, you know, start to lay down any asphalt or popping of any kind. This is not my wheelhouse, if you can't tell. But Dominic can certainly pitch in anytime he needs. But regardless, the street, the, the street sweeper is kind of a multipurpose tool for public works. It serves more than just driving around and then cleaning up our streets during the fall months. It helps to keep as many leaves as possible out of our storm drain system, thereby reducing the amount that we see kind of localized flooding on streets because you get to those areas where leaves have gummed up the, the storm drains and there's nowhere for the water to go except around it. So a very helpful piece of equipment. And we certainly want to try to figure out what is our next move to either replace or repair this unit.
You're welcome. Dominic, do we still sweep the road out through toward the Narrows? We used to do a portion of that. Do we still do that?
No, unless ODOT asks.
Okay, okay. Because I remember seeing them out there, well, it's probably a year ago now. I miss think about it, so.
Usually after winter time, when the centers are in the, in the center, they'll get ahold of me and we'll run out, but not, not monthly. It's like one time a year.
I'm, I'm, I kind of like the idea of we use some possible purchase or lease and then set up a reserve fund. I think that's probably the best direction. I know we've had a couple of meetings discussing this. I think that's the best one, in my opinion, probably go. But we were talking about Enterprise, but I went on to a couple of municipality sites where they've had used sweepers. Can we buy from them sites too, or, or is that kind of out of our? And I've seen some a lot, I mean, from all indication and pictures, they look good, but that doesn't mean they're good. I mean, it depends on what.
We can look. We can probably buy.
We can buy from wherever.
Yeah.
We can buy from any municipality. That's where we got this report, this street sweeper. And, you know, if we find something certainly that will meet our needs and fits our, our desired budget, then we can, we can go forward with something.
Mr. Mayor, are we talking about used ones?
They were used, because I looked at a couple of used ones. And again, I don't know the condition. That's up to these gentlemen to go look and see if the condition meets what you're looking for. But it was a lot less than 160. But these were from cities where they have a lot of money. As you email, well-known from the emergency service side of things, some will buy an ambulance, run it for about 20,000 miles, and wow, we're done with that one, let's get a new one. Because they have endless amount of money. That's a benefit for us to maybe grab something like that because getting literally almost a brand new one for a lot less. I was curious if we could buy from anybody not specific, like Enterprise specific.
Yeah, as long as it fits within our purchasing policy, which buying from any municipality certainly.
Well, we bought this one used and we used it for 11 years, and it's selling us the brand new ones, and we're going to go for four to seven years. And so we should have that too.
To be fair, to be clear, that four to seven year estimate is based on a, it would last a lot longer than that. It's, it's about kind of maximum cost benefit. So that seven years, four to seven years, based on the Department of Transportation's kind of average lifespan, says that that is the point at which if you sell it, you're going to see a maximum return. You'll get the most money out of it to then put into another one. And that's kind of what we've moved towards as, as an organization with Enterprise is trying to find that peak where before we start putting in time and maintenance into something, where can we, you know, sell it at its maximum, maximum peak to then reinvest in a replacement.
Well, it's like the emergency services side of it. I think the ambulance is 120,000 miles or something like that. And they have to get rid of the ambulance or they have to start looking.
Which we haven't had the option to do for a long time.
I think that's one of the biggest things is that's when things start to break and you're starting to repair it all the time. And, you know, we've used a sweeper a lot, but we've, we've put in a lot of time repairing it and money, parts and stuff. It's continuing all the time.
I think us just dumping money into it was just throwing money into a pit.
Well, there's no benefit to that. And if you, the pictures don't do it justice enough. If you go look at it, it is awful. It is totally awful.
I think it's time to get a new one or a new, one pretty darn close. But we have to figure out cost efficiency and how we do it.
And did you guys include anywhere, I'm not seeing an estimated annualized cost of leasing one? How much is that?
We're still trying to get the vendors to give us an estimate on the lease. So what we'll do based on this direction today is get those compiled, a lease and a purchase option and bring that back so that you can see what they all look like. It depends on, certainly on the lease agreement, the term for that.
Dominic, now you're talking about four to seven years if you buy a new one.
Correct.
But can somebody give me an answer to whether or not that's the important? It takes four to seven years, or is it a town like Lebanon or Sweet Home that's going to take a lot longer to do that?
That four to seven year estimate was grabbed from the U.S. Department of Transportation. Likely it is just kind of an average across any kind of organization, which would include bigger cities that are going to maybe run it more often. Certainly, Sweet Homes may run longer. And if we were to purchase something, we would then, you know, kind of do that cost benefit on a regular basis to determine, is now the time, or we're starting to see an uptick in our maintenance? Is our mechanic spending a lot of time on it? So yes, it very well could last longer than seven years in Sweet Home because less streets, smaller size, less.
Well, I'd like to know, anyways, it would be how many miles is on it? How old is it? And what price are we paying for it?
Yeah, and the engines that we have never have miles. We never have miles. We've got hours. That's where the pumps, what goes down there. And we're not talking about 160,000 dollars.
And that's, that's the big thing because there's two motors. There's the regular motor that drives the truck. And there's the pony motor that controls the fan.
Well, at this point, what I'm thinking is, I think it would be to our advantage to buy a new one unless we get a really good deal on the used one.
We'll write and do some, yeah, we'll bring it down. Based on this, we'll bring you back some. We'll try and, yeah, get some actual proposals in front of us and we'll weigh those with the staff and try and bring you a recommendation in the near future.
Okay. Thank you, John.
Well, absolutely. I agree with you.
Okay.
And again, I think if, if a new one really only lasts seven years, let's say it lasts 10 years, okay? only lasts seven years, let's say it lasts ten years, okay? If it's ten years, then a hundred and sixty thousand dollars. We're paying sixteen thousand dollars a year for this. If we repair this one, and I'm not saying we should, I'm just saying if we did and we say it costs us thirty thousand dollars repair, now we're only paying six thousand dollars a year, right? Or if it lasts five years. Um, I like the idea of looking for a used one. I, that's a decent repair, you know, decent use. I'm not for spending twenty-two thousand dollars a year on a new one. That's not fiscal conservative.
I, I just want to clarify. I'm not, several of you have made statements on the lifespan. The four to seven years is, is, is really an accounting term, I think, of that's when you can get the most value. It's like a used car. Um, some of us drive cars until they can't go anymore. So you spend whatever, thirty thousand dollars on a vehicle and you may drive it for thirty years. Um, some people buy a thirty thousand dollar vehicle, they keep them for three or four years, but they trade them in before they get the miles up on them to get the maximum value of the trade-in. And that's what that four to seven year number is. So I just want to make sure that y'all understand that. It's not that the, the machine will quit working after that seven or ten years. It's just, so we could, again, and with Tommy's skillset, I mean, he's already been, we've been nursing this thing along here for the past several months. They've been, Greg has been bugging me for some time to get on this and you know, we could have this for thirty, forty years, you know, depending on, on the model. So I just want to make sure everyone understands that four to seven is an accounting term for amortization. Uh, and costing the, the vehicle out, but not the actual lifespan of the piece of equipment.
This current sweeper is probably twenty-five to thirty years old. Because we did buy a used, we ran it for eleven, our predecessors probably, it may be closer to twenty, but you know, it's, it's had a long time and so.
It's nineteen ninety-seven.
So that's true. So, but I mean, it's, it's, it's run a long time and we could certainly do the same with another, with, with whatever we purchased. Um, and then certainly that would bring that, that annual, that annual cost down.
I'm gonna assume that you'll look at brands and reviews, cause there can't be that many companies making these. I'm not assuming it's just a couple of these.
Yeah, we've, we've looked at a few. We've actually been looking at it for a couple of years. Uh, we demoed one last year. So, yeah, we, we've checked it out.
Mr. Mayor, I just want to, I, I would love to be fiscal conservative as well, but I also see that just fixing this one will take a month of your time, which I think time's more valuable than that. So I too would like a good used one. And I don't want that shopping to take so much time. So I'm up for leasing one. Um, with the possibility of purchasing later, but prefer the good used one, but I don't want to spend a lot of time. That could be basically.
I mean, sooner than later. I don't think we want to do the, that's approached our community, so.
Um, and we're, we're at about three months. This will be three months with it being down.
Yes.
Yeah, and going into lease season.
Well, I had a couple of calls, complaints already where I knew this was the circumstance. We had glass in the street. Couple of issues, people complained that you didn't have it cleaned up and I knew where our situation was. So we need to get on soon.
Well, just digging in, make sure that you get it back at your next.
Mr. Mayor, I don't want comment. I don't, I don't wish to give you a thing that I, I'm, I'm opposed to using, because it could be a good deal. I, I think I would prefer a new one, but if, if that doesn't work out, that's fine too. But I would also like to know what the warranty is on a new one. And how long that lasts and what they cover. So that might be an issue that would help us make a decision on that.
Oh, one thing we did kind of learn, I think, after buying this one was somewhere around that seven to twelve years and depending on how much is being used and what kind of debris you're picking up, that hopper and the fan, those things wear. And we, we probably should have, when we purchased it, sent it and had it resurfaced inside. That's hindsight, but I think you're looking at cost, more cost on top of whatever, if you, if you do go use. On that.
So could that be added into wherever you bring to us, the cost of resurfacing?
Sure.
Because I'm gonna assume that the lease form, if something went wrong with it, we can't just repair it, right? And so I would be interested in wanting to know what that would include if we entered lease besides the overall cost per year. And, uh, because I have to scrap that. It's down, uh, perhaps that what they are responsible for and what our abilities are to, if it breaks down, what, what that looks like.
We'll line out everything the best we can and what we find and make sure that you get all the information you can.
And we'll, we'll leave it sitting out back for a day or two. And, uh, if you would like to tour it, um, we can bring Tommy down or we can certainly, someone can just walk out there with you and kind of point out some of the issues too.
He really probably won't need any help.
Yeah, it's pretty obvious.
We need a new one.
Thank you, John. Mr. Mayor, before we, I'd like to jump ahead to about the parks. Can you, I haven't been down there in a while. Can you give me an update or us an update on what Sankey's got going right now? Do they have any concrete in or?
Yeah, we're waiting on the contractor. There's one onboard. Uh, there's also an electrician onboard. Um. This time of year, uh, everybody's busy.
Yes.
The concrete guy, and I, I hate to say this out loud, he was, said he was sixteen to seventeen weeks out. And he's gonna try to fit us in if he's got a gap. So we have around a playground is ready for him to come in and form. And once he gets the forms, then we can, we can fill or take out whatever. We're, we're close enough for him to get forms in. Um, we're probably gonna start tomorrow with the south side of, um, the restrooms with the conduit and the lights and, uh, the irrigation over there.
Yeah, you guys did a good job.
Yeah, I think my, my parks guy kind of got a little burnt out, um, leading up and through that playground. And then the heat on top of it.
Yeah. Anyway, okay, thank you.
Yeah. And, uh, that wasn't us. If anybody, you hear any comments on the stripes, striping through town? Uh, that was Marion County did that, uh, striping for us this year. And I already called them about, it looks like overspray. I don't know if you guys have seen it.
Yeah.
And, uh, he said, give it about two days and it should be normal. It's the type of paint and the heat. Evident. We'll see. I was a little freaked out when I seen that.
Thank you, John.
Yep.
Have a good evening.
Thanks, guys.
Yep.
Well, now there's no other curveballs. I'm gonna go back to the Council Action Resolution for twenty-two.
What agenda?
Resolution twenty-two for twenty-twenty.
Yeah.
Oh. Uh, before you is resolution number twenty-two for twenty-twenty. Um, as we discussed last meeting, uh, the local option levies, uh, which are required to be renewed every five years or they, or, or they just expire. Uh, this resolution is specifically for the police operating levy. Uh, we have proposed in this resolution to leave the levy rate at seven dollars and eighty-five cents per thousand. Um, we covered last time, um, kind of what the estimated, uh, compression we are, are thinking we will face as, as things kind of change with markets and, and where we're at today. Uh, certainly, we do anticipate that the compression will come back in some fashion. Um, albeit slower than kind of what we saw with the two thousand eight, um, housing market bubble burst. Um, I, in this five-year, uh, levy cycle, we don't anticipate that we will see a compression rate of thirty-eight point two percent again. Um, certainly, that's not unheard of in our future, but we don't believe that it'll be in this five-year plan. Um, we also learned after this document was put together, um, that the, that Lynn County approved, uh, pushing their, I would say, or their chair's office levy to voters in the November election. With an increase from two dollars and eighty-three cents per thousand to three dollars and eight cents per thousand. Uh, we do anticipate that that actually changes our, our estimates on the compression figures. Um, unfortunately, we were a little late. This, these documents had already been submitted when, when we got this information, but, um, we are anticipating that that will put a small, a small crunch on what we get here, uh, because it will increase the compression levels faster than, than originally projected. Uh, our initial estimates were that we would see on the police department side, uh, I think a seventy-five thousand dollar decrease in the amount of revenues we would earn in a given fiscal year as a result of the increase in their levy rate. Certainly, this is not, this has been, this has happened before. Um, the tennis ball has kind of gone back and forth as to Sweet Home raises theirs, ours, um, the county raises theirs. Uh, it's been a topic of discussion at multiple finance conferences that I've been to using this very example. Uh, and really, it's just a testament to how awesome measures five and fifty are and the, the impact that they have on local government revenue generation. We unfortunately turn to local options every five years for both our police services and our library because our permanent rate is almost nothing. Uh, we certainly, you know, if you'll, if you will see in the documents that our, our public safety levy is estimated to bring in about three million dollars a year. And our permanent rate only brings in about six hundred and fifty thousand. So certainly, there would be, it would it would be a far stretch of the imagination to assume that without that three million dollars of extra revenue coming in every, every year, that we'd be able to fund certain services. Um, certainly, I can't say that it would be police specifically, we, you know, that would be up to the council to determine if the things were going to be reconfigured, but anyways, all that being said, we know the county is proposing an increase. The seventy-five thousand dollars, we could certainly decide, you certainly could decide as a council to increase uh, our levy rate at this point if you wanted to. Uh, their levy would not kick in until, I think it's twenty twenty-three. Uh, because while they're going two years early, it won't take effect until their current levy expires. Uh, so we, they, that current levy wouldn't kick in until July one, twenty twenty-three for them.
That's probably not going to be very clear to first.
Likely, it will make it a little more confusing, muddy the waters a little bit. Um, but as stated in, in our, in news articles and, and from the county commissioners, a lot of the, the, the draw for, for them moving their levy up for reapproval is the, the strong, uh, support of law enforcement in the county. Um, so there's a whole lot of unknowns, I guess, certainly with, with an increase in their rate. We, I believe we've had conversations surrounding kind of moving toward more of like a Deschutes County model where folks inside, properties inside city limits have one rate for county public safety services and folks in the county have a different rate. Uh, because certainly cities are, are covered often by local policing, uh, agencies like ours. Um, but at this time, that's not something that the, the county was willing to move forward with. I can try to answer any questions. A lot of this is, is new to us, certainly since, since it was kind of a last minute thing. Um, at least our standpoint to act. We're just trying to learn what the effects may be. The last, this would impact the last two years of our levy. Uh, that's, that's up to me.
Okay, first from the council.
One thing to talk about to be fully funded. As opposed to eighty percent.
To fully fund the police department?
Well, what, what kind of is included in the budget?
Uh, I think their annual budget is three point eight million.
Yes.
Um. So if I, let me, let me push the button and I can try and tell you.
I'll try and open that, uh, what, what.
For the police department to fund three point eight million, we would need a levy rate of twelve dollars and ninety-five cents per thousand. When you take into account the compression that then that adds to properties inside Sweet Home City Limits.
Any questions? Any discussions? Now, the director.
So Mr. Mayor, I approve resolution number twenty-two for twenty twenty. Maintaining the current operating level is a levy rate at seven point eighty-five. Seven dollars and eighty-five cents, one thousand dollars. Refer to local option, I think, two.
Motion on the table.
Oh, I'll second that.
Motion second. Uh, let's do roll call on this one, please.
Counselor.
That's good.
Counselor. Counselor Gorley. Oh, aye. Uh, Counselor Trask?
Aye.
Counselor Nash?
Yeah.
Counselor Gerson?
Aye.
Mayor Moller?
Aye.
Counselor Coleman?
Aye.
Well, Director Shoney, I have six eyes, no nays, and one absence. Moving on to request for Council Action Resolution twenty-three for twenty twenty, resolution for Smith and Lecter's question renewing library services operating levy.
This conversation will be a lot shorter for this one because a lot of the information is the same. Uh, compression is certainly a concern for us with the county's increase in their levy that will change our compression estimates, certainly within Sweet Home. Um, at this point, when we produce these documents, we were proposing to leave the library levy at the current rate of a dollar fifteen? Is that right, bro? Dollar seventeen, sorry. Dollar seventeen per thousand.
Question or discussion, council? Council Director.
Oh, Mr. Mayor, I move to approve resolution number twenty-three for twenty twenty. Uh, maintaining the current operating levy rate for the library at a dollar seventeen per one thousand is set value. I refer the local option levy to voters to decide. Second.
Motion second, all unfair by roll call, please.
Counselor Trask?
Aye.
Counselor Nash?
Yeah.
Counselor Gerson?
Aye.
Mayor Moller?
Aye.
Counselor Coleman?
Aye.
Counselor Gorley?
Aye.
Director Shoney, I have six eyes, no nays, and one absence approval of resolution number twenty-three for twenty twenty. Moving on to new business, Sankey Park Bandstand. Information only.
Uh, this is on page forty-six of your packet. Um, I'll go ahead and wires will cover some information on this for us.
All right. So, uh, as you are aware, the Sankey Park, there's a bandstand there on the premises. It was constructed in the late thirties or forties, or early forties for the WPA project. Um, the structure is pretty old, but it's never actually been placed on a historic register, uh, which is here. In early twenty eighteen, a tree fell on it, uh, causing some damage and concerns about the safety of the structure. Uh, Stability Engineering Incorporated was hired to conduct a structural review of the bandstand. They completed their review last summer. The, the report shows that the structure does not meet current building code, cannot meet snow load requirements for our area. Most concerning, the report shows that the floor beams are inadequate, the main horizontal structural beams are extremely inadequate, and the footings are significantly undersized. Since then, we've been, uh, trying to the structure, necessitate discussion regarding the future of the bandstand. Park and Tree Committee discussed the matter at a recent meeting and recommended that the structure be removed and replaced with a similar, similarly sized structure that incorporates architectural elements and/or materials from the original. So the, the question before us, uh, and this is only for discussion today, is whether , uh, the right direction is for the city to try to repair, seek to repair the existing structure or to, uh, replace it. And, um, there is some, you know, another piece of information that's important, there is some insurance money that can be coming, uh, from damage to it, but because that insurance money is limited to the damage caused by the, the tree falling, um, it really doesn't address, uh, the, the full needs of the structure. We only can get about forty-eight hundred bucks for it. So, um, it's kind of up, uh, for you to discuss and decide how, how you want to proceed. I know that there's, um, some strong feelings in the community regarding the structure since it is a rather historic and, um, and a landmark for the park. Um, but that's, that's the situation, that we could be putting money into a structure that, um, may not be worth the, the repairs. Um, and that's kind of a discussion for you to consider.
Yes, Mayor, we've talked about this at the parks, uh, quite a bit, and it definitely needs to go. It's not, there's no way we should put that kind of money into that, that, that structure. Um, and to remove it and put a new one in, that's going to be, take some time, and I'm pretty sure that we can get the community to come together on that to help us build that back. Uh, and it will probably be a way better structure than we have there now. Uh, so I, I, I think that, for me, it would be number three, but, but that's up to you guys, too, but, um, because people used it, they used it. I mean, they had bands there in the summer and at the jamboree, they were there, and then the tree hit it, and it probably wasn't safe then either, you know, so, uh, anyway, just my opinion that it has to, it really needs to go because it's going to fall down.
Well, I think it definitely needs to go, and it's definitely a liability, but knowing this community, I think the community will come together and will help rebuild it.
Yeah, I, I do, too.
And it may not even come close to the one sixty, knowing this community and the resources we have.
I don't know that people realize that the original plan was to put a bandstand, or excuse me, an amphitheater behind it on the hill so people could view what was going on. But I really do think you can utilize that if it was usable.
Oh, yeah, they certainly would. I agree with that.
So I'd say the consensus of the council probably would be to take it down. I mean, possibly use the existing materials potentially and then look at our resources to rebuild.
So, I do have a question.
Yeah.
So, Blair, would this be put in the same place because it's taught, the, uh, assessment talked about a tree undermining the foundation, so would we look at a different place maybe to put it, the new one?
Actually, there's, there's a lot of reasons to look at a different location. Uh, with the improvements to the park in the past, uh, and the, the hillside there, um, moving it to the, um, closer to where the existing, uh, the old playground, uh, is, um, makes a lot of sense from a, a topographical point of view because the, the, there's a curvature to the hillside and you could have more of an amped up theater type situation there. And so it does make sense to move it, yes.
And, and, and is this part of the plan that was put together? I don't recall whether it was in the plan or not.
Yeah, Joe has, has put together some, the, the plans that he's put together, um, basically, in, he, he designed them to have a, a potential future site for the bandstand. Um, and it would fit in quite well.
And Blair, I mean, and Brendan, what would it cost to take it down?
Uh, I don't have an estimate on.
Some fuel and a gun and a match.
We could get the football team out there with some sledgehammers, but I'm just saying.
Yeah. To safely take it down.
I don't, I don't have, I don't have a estimate on the, the, how much it would take to cost to take it down, unfortunately. Um, I don't know if that was done as part of the, the engineering assessment.
We, we, we don't have any firm data on that, I mean, you did, we can, we can try to get some more. I think part of the process for, for seeking a replacement will be seeking the cost of taking that down, but, um, I don't, I don't think it would be as much as it would take to repair it.
No, I don't think so. Hopefully not.
Probably wouldn't be great.
We did receive one cost estimate from, uh, City County Insurance Services as far as repairing the damage that was done when a tree fell on, on top of that, that bandstand. Um, and I think they said forty-five hundred dollars to repair just basically the roofing and, and, and some of the, the structural stuff on the, a, above the flooring. Um, so taking it down would probably be in the, in that, somewhere between that and, I don't know, ten thousand.
Okay.
And I'm, that's shooting from the hip there, so don't quote me on that.
Well, Mr. Mayor, I think it needs to be taken down sooner than later. I, I think it needs to be taken down as, as soon as we can get it done and possibly use the forty-eight hundred dollars or whatever it is to, to fi- finance that part. Uh, and I think probably all you'd need is a pretty big track hole thing and just pull it down. You know, I don't know. I don't know.
Public works to avoid or something.
Maybe some cost to, to knock it down, certainly, and then the biggest cost, I think, would be hauling it all out of there.
I, I agree with that.
Probably. It's got some dry rock, so.
Yeah.
It'll burn, too. Um, so, but, Mr. Mayor, do you need, do they need something else?
No, I was just, it was actually just a information only, but I think the consensus of the council is to tear it down and look at potentially rebuilding it. You know, maybe a different location, same location, however, and look at our local resources and see if there's some way that they might have equipment to take that down. Take that down right away, will you? Okay. So, moving on to ordinance bills, um, for first reading. We did have a motion second to move ordinance number eleven for twenty twenty forward to first reading, so.
Yes, a second.
In dialogue, can we use internet when you request?
Fast.
Somebody?
Ladies' voice and fast.
There will no eleven for two thousand and twenty ordinance, no. Underscore, 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 an ordinance annexing and amending their official zoning map whereas the applicant, Jim Bradford, applied for zone change, application ZMA twenty dash zero two, and requested a zoning map change for an area consisting of zero point six one acres located at the south end of Twenty-third Avenue, approximately one hundred feet south of Ironwood Street, Sweet Home, or ninety-seven thousand three hundred and eighty-six. The Sweet Home zoning map is proposed to change from the residential low-density residential, R one, zone to the residential medium-density, R three, zone. The subject property is identified on the Lynn County Assessors' map as one three S zero one E three two C, a tax lots four thousand seven hundred and four thousand seven hundred and thirty-five. The applicant has requested a property line adjustment between two lots. Application PLA twenty dash zero two was filed simultaneously as the zone map amendment application. The property line adjustment application is a type I administrative decision application. The proposal would transfer approximately fourteen thousand one hundred and eighty-nine square feet, zero point three three of an acre, from parcel one to parcel two, and transfer approximately twelve thousand three hundred and sixty-three square feet, zero point two eight of an acre, from parcel two to parcel one. There will be no net gain. Parcel one and parcel two would be combined to form one parcel. The properties are currently in the residential low-density, R one, zone dot, and whereas the Planning Commission of the City of Sweet Home held a public hearing on the sixth of July two thousand and twenty with due notice of such public hearing having been given and provided an opportunity for public comments and testimony. The Planning Commission deliberated at their the sixth of July two thousand and twenty meeting and recommended that the city council approve application ZMA twenty dash zero two, and whereas the city council held a public hearing on this matter on the twenty-eighth of July two thousand and twenty with due notice of such public hearing having been given and provided an opportunity for public comments and testimony. The city council approved this application by motion at their the twenty-eighth of July two thousand and twenty meeting, and whereas the proposed R three zoning is needed to facilitate development of the subject property. Now, therefore, the City of Sweet Home does ordain as follows. Section one, the City of Sweet Home adopts the findings of fact in support of zone change application ZMA twenty dash zero two included as exhibit to section two. The City of Sweet Home amends the official zoning map identified in SHMC seventeen dot twenty dot zero two zero as the city zoning map, including all subsequent amendments for the an area consisting of zero point six one acres located at the south end of Twenty-third Avenue, approximately one hundred feet south of Ironwood Street, Sweet Home, or nine seven three eight six dot, and identified on the Lynn County Assessors' map as one three S zero one E three two C, a tax lots four thousand seven hundred and four thousand seven hundred and thirty-five. The official zoning map shall be amended from the residential low-density, R one, zone to the residential medium-density, R three, zone for the subject property as shown on exhibit B passed by the council and approved by the mayor, this underscore.
This blank day of blank twenty twenty, blank mayor, test, blank city manager, expired city recording.
Okay. Questions of council? Okay, um, council director to move this on to, um, second reading.
Some move.
Second. Motion second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Director show, we have five ayes, one nay, and one absent moving it forward to second reading by title only on next council meeting, August twenty-fifth. Second reading by title only, ordinance bill number ten for twenty twenty.
Ordinance bill number ten for twenty twenty, ordinance number, ordinance annexing and amending the official zoning map.
Discussion or questions of council?
Eighty, is that on?
Eighty-three.
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 Great, did you read the actual title or did you read the title off of the agenda? I read the actual title on page ninety-one of the packet.
Any questions of council?
Mr. Mayor, I move that we move this on to third reading.
Motion second?
Motion and second, all in, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
Director show, we have five ayes, one nay, and one absent moving it forward to third and final reading on August twenty-fifth council meeting. Um, no third readings, uh, moving on to any reports of committees. Anybody would like to bring something forth from their committees? Nothing from committees?
Charter committee? Uh, Counselor Trask and I are going to be meeting with the charter committee. Um, so if you have ideas on the things that you want changed in the charter, please give them to me. Um, and then we're going to plan on, uh, getting it on the November ballot in twenty twenty-one, so we're going to take a year or two redo it and hopefully do it right, so. Be sure you give ideas to me.
Mr. Mayor, I would, I would encourage you guys to, the counselors, to read it. It's not very long and it's, there's just a couple of things that I'd be concerned about. Um, one of them was the, well, never mind, it's, uh, but anyway, so it, it doesn't take long. It's not, it's not, I mean, ten pages or something like that, so it would be to your advantage to just read it. And there might not be very many, or maybe any, I don't know, but it'd be to the benefit of everybody to read that thing.
Okay.
Mr. Mayor, regarding the legislative committee, as you all know, um, seven million dollars was voted on last night and passed through Senate and the House. Surprised to see that in that piece of legislation, but excited that it came about.
Yeah, I called Kate, got it taken care of.
Yeah. Anything else to commit, any ad hoc, did you have anything come out of that? Um, reports to city officials, mayor's report, um, August nineteenth, the Chamber of Commerce is going to hold their banquet, basically, I think, on a virtual. Um, again, we're going to be, I think the city's going to give a update on city status and then we'll be handing out mayor's award and a few other topics is going to come up out of this, so if somebody wants, I think it's on virtual, Ray, is that still the game plan?
That's my understanding, yeah.
Okay. But my hat's off to Sherri Springer and Fred, Fred Gerard. I think that they.
That's huge.
Kudos to them.
Yeah.
So I can reach out to them and give them my thanks because it means a lot to our community. Uh, city manager's report, anything?
Couple of things for you, uh, yes, Senate Bill fifty-seven twenty-three passed the House forward about ten forty-five last night. Um, kind of came out of the blue, but we're certainly thankful for, uh, to be able to know that Senator Gerard and Representative Springer are thinking about us and our community and the work that they do. And I think Counselor Coleman, uh, kind of hit the nail on the head, is it, it's not a normal, this isn't how things normally work. So this is an example of, of, uh, our elected representatives working hard for our community, doing things a little bit outside the box, as a matter of fact, to help us get where we need to go. Um, I'll be honest with you, I've lost some sleep over that because we had set things up to build and that seven million was a big piece of moving forward and leveraging that money for some other funding sources. Uh, and so, um, it's, it's a big relief for us and for the community to, to get that money back. So we will make sure that we, uh, thank them profusely, uh, in many different ways, uh, in the next few days, so. Um, sad to report, Thursday will be Tommy Mull's last day with the City of Sweet Home. Um, we're going to invite council to come and wish him goodbye. We're going to have pizza and, you know, throwing away for him Thursday, be roughly during the lunch hour, uh, probably say a few words, try to make fun of him, embarrass him a little bit, and maybe even feel a little bit guilty about leaving us.
He's a quitter.
Yeah, we'll work on him. He's not going to do us any good. Uh, that being said, his replacement, Tommy was gracious enough to give us a significant amount of notice and allowed us to actually hire a replacement, so they'll be overlapping for this, for these three, four days. Uh, Ethan Rowe started with us this week, uh, to replace Tommy. Uh, he came back for day two, so we didn't scare him away, we didn't overwhelm him, uh, which is, uh, we're thankful for that. Uh, and last but not least, a couple of meetings ago, we asked each of you to please fill out a development, economic development ranking sheet, uh, and we haven't gotten those all back yet. Um, so here we are. Um, we do have a former principal on, uh, on, on the committee and she could potentially put you in timeout. Turn you back in. So, please, for us to move forward, it's important that we have your guys' consensus and your input, uh, to allow us to then develop the strategies to fulfill your goals. Uh, so please turn those in to us, uh, as soon as possible. And with that, I'd take any questions anybody might have.
Uh, is there some way we could, um, contact Sherri Springer and, and Mr. Gerard and send him a letter, tell him?
Absolutely.
Or whatever, we, the whole council, sign it?
We'll put something together and put that. We want to reach out to our local, uh, press corps as well, which one of them left, so when I see him Sunday at church, I'm going to.
Yeah, that was a big loss.
Give him a better time for that.
Yeah.
But, yeah, we want to make sure they, again, this is very unordinary, the way that this took place, and, uh, and we need to make sure we recognize them for that.
Yeah. Very good.
That's all I have.
Thank you. Um, department directors' reports, anybody would like to talk, anything bringing up for the department directors?
I just have a question for Blair. I may. So Blair, how many, I'm sorry, picking on you tonight. How many applicants have we had for those business loans, those small business loans?
Uh, so there's only one program that is up and running so far. Right. That's the, the one that we.
So, please, for us to move forward, it's important that we have your guys' consensus and your input to allow us to develop strategies to fulfill your goals. So, please turn those in to us as soon as possible. And without undertaking questions, anybody might have?
Is there some way we could contact Sherri Springer and Mr. Gerard and send them a letter telling them?
Absolutely.
Or whatever we, the whole council, sign it?
We will put something together and put that. We want to reach out to our local press corps as well, which, one of them left. So, when I see him Sunday at church, I'm going to...
Yeah, that was a big loss.
Give him a better time for that.
Yeah.
But, yeah, we want to make sure they, again, this is very unordinary, the way that this took place, and we need to make sure we recognize them for that.
Yeah.
Very good.
That's all I have.
Thank you. Department directors' reports, anybody would like to talk, anything bringing up for the department directors?
I just have a question for Blair, I may. So, Blair, I'm sorry, picking on you tonight. How many applicants have we had for those business loans, those small business loans?
So, there's only one program that is up and running so far. And that's the one that we joined with the state together on. And unfortunately, we've only gotten about five applications for them. They've all been for the twenty-five hundred dollar level. I just got an email from another one tonight that will probably submit an application.
So, is there a vetting process or do you just give them money?
There's an application that they need to fill out. Depending on how they fill out that application, there's additional information I have to supply with it. Once I get that information, then I review it, and I, there's some, there's some kinds that the state has provided on. Okay, where to go and what checked out. And then I am required to send a report to, pre, what they call a pre-award report to the state, and they run it through their process to make sure that there's not a duplication of businesses receiving the same grant. So, that can be done fairly quickly. But, you know, if somebody gets me a completed application and there's no issues with it, within a couple of days, it can be reviewed.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, I have one question too. Chief, are we going to have a resource officer in September?
Those are questions still up in the air right now. And really, my hope is to meet with the school superintendent next week. I, there's still somewhat in the planning stages of how their, their school year is going to look like. You know, right now, I think something correct or wrong, eight through third, it looks like it's, it's pretty much a go at this point in time. And so, we just have to discuss what, what role a school resource officer can play in a situation like that if our staffing allows it.
Yeah.
I believe Governor Brown moved the goalposts on them again today, ever so slightly.
Oh, really? Huh, I would have never thought that.
Right, shocker.
So, Brandon, I got a question for you then. So, we don't have a resource officer. What does that do to our budget?
That's a, the school resource officer, whoever's assigned to that position, that gets a temporary assignment pay. I think it's five percent, so it would...
No, 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 I'm not talking about that. I'm talking about if he's not a resource officer, and they're not paying for half of his wages.
It's about, it's about forty-eight thousand, I think, that we get from the school district each year. So, you have to make up forty-eight thousand.
Okay.
I don't know what people realize, the Organ Health Authority has control of whether or not we go back to school as well. And so, it just takes a couple of students to have us, and they shut us down.
Well, I know the soup is that they're trying, they're working hard to try to get it going. It's, now, I know it's not going to be easy. There is no way it will be, but...
Okay.
Mr. Mayor, I had a couple of comments that I was, I missed last time, and thank you for excusing me. But reading over the report for the library, I just wanted to encourage Rose. My daughter took advantage of the gardening activity kits, and she also has picked up books at the mini free libraries, whatever they're called, and has read those during the summer, which has been very helpful. And she also has been going on to Lynda.com and, I don't know, learning some things that, you know, it's mostly for adults, but she's watching it. Thank you for all you're doing there. So, that's helping me as a parent, so I appreciate that.
Rose, did you want to bring anything up? You had a form tonight, but anything you want to add about the library real quick, or are you good?
Well, we did receive a grant from the Selects Tribe for, to move forward with the One Book, One Community. I want to take this off because it's moving up and down. One Book, One Community, which we will be rolling out very shortly. We're also looking at installing in Sankey Park a storybook walk, which is, we take a picture book and we put it in a frame, and that will be placed every twenty to thirty feet. And then that will be movable from park to park. So, that will encourage little ones to be, when they're outside, to continue to read and also get physical activity. But, yeah, we're, we're doing a lot of things in the library with a lot of grant funding that we were able to maximize at this point in time. And I would encourage you to come and look at all of our new furniture. It's in a big pile.
Thank you, Rose. There's nothing else?
Oh, wait, I got a question. I mean, if you guys don't know, Greg went down tuna fishing. And if he doesn't bring us a share of that to the council, then I think that he should, there'd be some repercussions, I would say.
The good news is I heard they limited out.
They did limit out. I talked to him today.
Yeah.
Yeah, he answered. It was his mistake, not mine.
Go ahead, Brandon.
So, I just wanted to add real quick for the council. Tomorrow would be our normal shut-off day, if this were a normal world. So, a hundred and twenty accounts are, were on the list as of this afternoon. The, there are five that, under the, the, the solution that we, that we discussed with you all, there are five that will get turned off tomorrow for non-payment because they were pre-COVID. So, these are accounts that either had payment plans that they didn't follow through on or had balances that accrued and racked up before the COVID pandemic. So, five will be turned off tomorrow, but there are still a hundred and fifteen accounts that are left with an outstanding balance that is slightly higher than us, for us than usual. We're usually in the, in our alpha, beta range. So, certainly, there are still feeling the effects of...
Do we have any more people applying for the payment plan since last meeting?
Yes, so there are, the letters have been beneficial. I don't have the numbers, unfortunately, for you. But I know that people have been receiving those letters and calling, trying to set up payment plans. We have been setting them up fairly consistently in our office. So, I can give you a better idea of kind of where the numbers are at when my report is in the next.
And one more thing. Honestly.
I just thought we were done.
The showcase photo thing is in full swing. So, go on the website, and it'll tell you how to apply and submit your photos. No contact, so I'm really excited about it. I think it's going to be fun.
It'll be good.
Nothing else, and nothing on the council business good of order? I will adjourn it.